I'm not one that likes.
Coming the west side is Ohio's coming like that from the north and they used the north.
Uh, there were people at.
Blue mine off the building off the house. I got marine governors in the hour. Yeah, well, it's the down.
Oh, the downs.
Yeah, that's a gutter, sorry.
All right, I've been turning my.
My gutters though, did you like on this, on my trim on the, on the end, on the, you can see where it hit that and pushed them.
Mm hmm.
So, I mean, yeah, I got.
Terry, did you get any confirmation back for room?
Um.
Cause I did not, I signed, I filled out that complimentary room deal.
Right.
I never got nothing back yet.
I don't know.
It's complimentary.
I don't know. I'd have to look back at that unless I have filled out.
I mean, you'd think you would have no one way or the other.
I know, exactly. And maybe we're just.
Corrections.
Single.
Okay, hearing done. Stand proved is. Okay, supervisors reports. Really, Adam, hide me.
I have a few things, so when my time is up, just say my time is up.
Start the clock.
I know. Just stop the timer on.
I still have people talking a little bit about the pipeline, and so I kind of, has anybody ever looked at how many people have filed an intervention to, to the.
Yeah, I think I've got.
There's quite a few.
An email box that's formless.
But I will tell you that there were compliments about what an excellent form Martha had filed, was much better than any of the other ones that they had seen, so they were gonna actually send a letter to Martha on what a.
Who's, who's they?
I, yeah, what Martha had provided for the intervention for Crawford County, I guess it was better than the average, so.
Who'd you hear that from?
One of the, the folks that are very monitoring of the pipeline issues and are up to date on what's going on.
She did a good job.
Gave us the compliments on what a good job we did, and I just thought I'd share that, that they were pleasantly surprised on what a good job Crawford County had done with their intervention, so thought I'd bring that up on a positive note today. Um, I went to the Crawford County Coalition Meeting, uh, and I really get a lot out of those meetings, it's the actual providers uh, in a very informal setting in which they go around and talk about what they all do, so what I found that they do have a Crawford County resource of all of the services available, which, you know, been on this board for a while and this is the best piece of information I ever got, so I kind of married that together with how much money, and this would be the bottom line, I just kind of try to get to the bottom line for everybody, on what we're as a region putting in for all these different services, and I, I know it's a region, but I still try really, really hard to make sure that Crawford County is using those resources and, you know, really making Crawford County a better place to live, knowing that we have all of these, and I struggle to figure out how we can get that word out there. I did bring back some brochures from all of the different agencies and kind of put some out there, you know, as they're waiting in line, maybe they can read them, uh, and we could get as many of these as we wanted, I'll just pass these two around, it has all of the names and numbers of all of the different services that are available to us, should be no reason in Crawford County that all of our services aren't met, uh, but that's always a good meeting, it's just so informal, so Head Start comes, Family Steps, uh, Family Crisis Center, Rose Trans Jackson, West Center Community Action, uh, we talk about what's actually going on in the schools, some reports, you know, about uh, how many kids they see and some of the issues that, you know, no names are ever mentioned that they're, that they're having. I also have a call in Carla Bishop, our coordinator for Crawford County, just to ask if we can get another update on how things are going in Crawford County. I think it's just similar to the way you get an update, um, tourism, you know, really helps us to feel like our money's being spent the way that, uh, we feel it should be, and that anybody that has a mental issue knows where they need to go to, uh, to get some help. Uh, I also, kind of in that same line, called Steiny again, to tell him that I have Exhibit One of exactly what we can use our opioid money for, and, uh, it, you can use it, uh, for so many different things, so I'm gonna try to get a meeting with him, he was on vacation last week, uh, but increased distribution to individuals who are uninsured or whose insurance has not covered the needed service. I just think that that's kind of really what we should key in on, is that there's someone out there that has an opioid addiction that they know that, that we could, that there is money in the county that was given back to us through the crisis, and I if we have money sitting there, we need to get it earmarked and we need to spend it, I don't know if the county is, they're gonna come take it back if we don't use it. I mean, I, I just think, so Pat, I kind of highlighted one of the things also, uh, if we could expand telehealth, uh, support mobile interventions, uh, uh, we could have a officer of prevention to help assist the, with the law, uh, this is what I'm gonna talk to, was staying about education of law enforcement and other first responders regarding appropriate practices.
That'd be too bad.
It's all here in this, this is, came from the state, so I'll pass that around in case somebody picks something out that they.
Are there classes for that?
Yes.
Or online, I mean, or travel or?
Yep, uh, I think that all of the information on, you know, they're, they've got acronyms for all of it, but it's, uh, the needs of criminal justice involved persons, and I think Colin should maybe identify somebody who's come through his system and that he, you keep saying, offer them some help, the county has money available to help these people that are a revolving door of get picked up, cause you had, you know, uh, I don't think anybody wants to have an addiction to opioids, I just don't think that they know how to break that cycle, and I think there's a reason that counties were awarded this money, uh, and I just think that we have to be proactive in using it the way that they, and unless the, the word is out there that we have it, um, it's just gonna sit there, uh, going mold, so.
Did you ever watch the mini series Dope Sick?
Yep, yes.
I mean, that's exact, it's all about the opioid addiction, and it is really sad to see how innocent people got hooked.
Absolutely.
And you can't, uh, hook yourself.
It's a cycle, and it's, uh, there's a reason that there are lawsuits, and, you know, we just need to.
I still think that Stacker family ought to be in prison, but anyway, and unfortunately, now that they've reeled that stuff back, these people that were addicted now went to non-prescription type.
No.
So, to fill that, yes, to fill that void, so it's just.
And there is a part in here where you can get, uh, Narcan, uh, not, Naloxone, uh, public health and, and entities provide free uh, Naloxone to anyone in the community, so we can have, so that's part of the, I just went through, cause nobody wants to read this whole thing, so I highlighted.
Every, every fire truck, I think, in Crawford County has Narcan.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
That new drug that.
Where do they get that?
You could get it for free from.
I think we can just get anything that is needed from the pharmacy, just store it, fifty white or whatever, just request some more. I think that's why we've been getting it.
What a money racketing scheme though, and people get addicted to opioids and they give it out like candy, and that's what you're seeing.
If you haven't watched Dope Sick, you need to watch it. It's amazing.
I watch all that stuff, I watch, yeah, and that's probably.
Well, they got them hooked and then they just kept up in the, the milligrams to keep them more hooked.
I wanna break the cycle, I, I, I don't know how we, but because we do have the money that was awarded to us through a lawsuit, I wanna use it.
I don't think this is gonna be the last time we big pharmacies just got so much power and everything.
Don't like anything about it, but, uh, and I'll pass these around, uh, we just gotta thank you from these folks for that fifteen thousand, so this is the brochure that they have out there, um, kind of, uh, educated on what they do, I'll educate. The other, uh, little tiny mission that I did this week was, you know, we had talked earlier about that compensation, human resource, so I, uh, called Isaac and got that actual presentation that they gave, it's, um, just to help us with the compensation, to get job descriptions and goals and, uh, uh, I didn't highlight the things you wanna read, but I do have his information if we would like to have him come and talk to the department heads and kind of just give us his sales pitch on what it is he does and see, you know, we can take and believe it.
We have a lot of that.
Yeah, I don't know, I think.
It is, it wouldn't cost us anything to have him just come in and eat and explain what it actually is that he does, and so there's information in here.
Makes you wonder.
If I would have you do anything, I'd probably just have you, uh, go kind of here to, uh, how he figures it out, so we could get that on the agenda if we wanted to.
Oh, just to be, we do go down that road with compensation.
Yeah.
Deal and job descriptions. Are you doing it to target one department individually or?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
I mean, I'm not, cause your deputies, when you're direct overseen.
They still need job descriptions, and it's been something I've been trying to work on, but.
That's just something I don't wanna be.
I understand the road we, the path we go down.
Fire, you know, just.
Right.
And I don't even know, I would think it would be awesome if we gave a job description for supervisors, what really are we supposed to be doing? You know, what, you know, when do we, when do we swim in the wrong lanes, you know, when are we, you know, what?
Yeah, just come with time.
With the title of, well.
We have a way to figure out you're in the wrong lane real fast, it seems like.
Really? I thought you just let people drown.
Yeah, I don't know.
Hard job description. May not be hooked to a rope.
Yeah.
All right.
What was caused to this though?
Uh, I don't know, it depends on how big your county is and, uh, exactly the scope of work you want him to do, so he doesn't have, uh, exact, yes, sir.
Where can the public get access to this pamphlet?
Well, there are, it's a, public health has some, I guess, in their little public thing, I.
Are they available at the courthouse?
I, I, I put, I didn't put those, those exact ones out there because I didn't felt there was a slot big enough, but I did put some of the other smaller ones. I, I don't know, that's why I brought it here, because.
Into the jail or the police station, should have.
Yeah.
In our, our website.
They, they had a stack of them, but I didn't wanna grab a stack and.
Use it on our website.
I, I only bring the problems, I don't have any of the solutions.
I do like.
There, that's what's.
Sorry, guys.
Did that get recorded?
Yes. I don't know how else to put it, I, you know, I, 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 I just have to keep it on the front burner, um, so that we can keep the discussion going and.
It is nice having that panel with all the research right there.
Fabulous, and, you know, when Dan used to sit here, it would be, uh, hey, Dan, can you get this out for us, um, how, how do we? The, the problem I see is the people who need the help the most don't have the resources to find it, you know, you know, it's people that aren't suffering from any problems, we can look for it, but if.
Water.
It's until you identify that you actually have the problem, you don't even go looking for, uh, the answer, I don't know.
Gene transfer. Back to the opioid.
Yes.
You didn't talk to like the school or.
I did, okay, I called, uh, Mike Pardon, and he said they had money and they were working on it.
You're worried about public health.
Public health, they said, oh, I don't really think that's something we, we have resources, so we're actually needed, Steiny is interested in Plains Area, I've already got to their grant. I really, you know, wanna tap into Steiny's, uh, group, the law enforcement, because I feel that they're the ones hands-on, seeing it out there every day, who's got the problem? They know who has the problem, they know probably who's actually selling it, but, uh, it's just a, uh, way I understand, it's a revolving door, you get arrested, you, you know.
Here's the old adage, some talk, you can drag a horse to water, you can't make him drink, they gotta want it to.
But if we offer.
Fortunately, we can offer and offer and offer.
Uh, we've never.
At least we try.
Yep, we've never told anybody that's come in, I don't believe, and that's why I wanna have a one-on-one meeting with our sheriff to see what we're doing to break the cycle and to offer, hey, do you wanna go for some treatment, we can help you, cause usually it's, well, I can't miss work, I, I don't have insurance, I, you know, we, we've got some money that we could give it a test try with somebody that, i- if the law enforcement says, do you want help, I can help you.
That's why I really appreciate Plains Area coming in and saying, here's what we're gonna do.
Right.
Here's what we need, and we're gonna help our community this way, we just need the funding.
Right, and we did no questions asked, and I, uh, and I think that that's going to help, cause when people come in to see them, you know, they have the tools to right, walk them down the right path, and I feel like there is somebody out there in Crawford County that wants to change their life, but they don't have the resources to do it, and if we can just plant that seed with our law enforcement, that you got some young kid that you picked up three times, and they're, you know, it's a revolving door.
Has the hospital been contacted on?
Kind of single, we've got our own funds, you know, I don't.
Result I've seen through my years of working on them is they need to be totally removed from the area.
Yep, yeah, change your playgrounds, your playmates and.
Yeah, those are the ones that I've truly seen break the cycle.
Right, and you can't come back.
You can't release them out of this jail and take them right back to the same neighborhood they just came from.
Absolutely not, uh.
Unfortunately.
Right.
I think we end up with a lot of them in jail that, if we could find the right program.
Well, I think it's, it's very, you're probably, you're right.
We probably spend more money on meals down here than, than we should, because people, I, I get, you put a criminal in there that's a danger to the community, but when they're only a danger to themselves in particular, I mean, anybody can be a danger in a car, but you get my point.
Right.
But I think that if you, if you look at that, that's what them San Antonio cops kept reentering, I mean, we, we put too many people in jail, it actually makes them worse, because now the, now all they got is boredom and networking with the wrong element.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah, they learn from the actual career criminals while they're in there.
Yeah, no kidding.
And then they kind of reel them in because they see a dummy they can make use of, cause they're inexperienced and.
Maybe I could put some of these in the library, maybe I could take some up to the school, because I got time to do it, I just, you know, I didn't wanna bring a whole handful in here, and then we already have them, I grabbed, you know, a couple and kind of to, to get the word out there.
Library is a good, good idea.
Good idea, so.
Who printed it, who made it?
Well, it would come from, uh, um, a Net Coster's group, I think, I think that's where it came from, I think that's, yeah, she's the one that had them there, so I just thought it's seniors, it's got legal services and transportation and hotlines, you know, you ask people, what number would you call if you were having a mental episode, and nobody knows, you know, nobody knows the number even.
Nine one one is what they do.
My last little speech, I know my time's.
In Arizona, the Phoenix, you call Rafi.
I'm gonna talk faster about the city center.
Their clock on what?
I got, Region Twelve got back to me, and they, uh, just don't think the scope of work of what we've been done is something that they would be interested in. They didn't see it as enough, that, that we don't need an architect, we don't need a, uh, you know, big designer, they're like, common sense almost tells you that you need to put the door in, you know, shampoo the carpets and then paint, you know, or, you know, however you wanna do it. Outside and insider, two separate deals, you can be working on the eaves, fouts and the concrete even while you're painting, so it doesn't all have to go in a chain, but who is that glue that binds it and gets it all going, how do you, you know, so along with that, I went, Terry was kind enough to send me our procurement policy, which I just had that a minute ago, Terry, cause, oh, here's right here in front of me, duh, um, and I, uh, went in to talk to Colin or Martha, and they were in court and busy, but I once again highlighted the parts that I think are, uh, and there's just two little small parts that I think you guys will be interested in, our project. So my question is, what is Jake doing with the equipment that's currently in the public health? It's kind of brought to my attention after kind of talking about all of this, that what's gonna happen to all the stuff that's currently running public health? Why do we need all brand-new, high fancy stuff? What, right now, it's working just fine where they're at, why just because we're getting a new building, do we need all of this extra expense, what's happening right now that won't work over there? I asked Terry and she didn't know the answer.
I thought about it, but I kind of wonder if, uh, I wonder if he wants it to talk with his fancy doodad he's got here.
I T.
I T, yeah, so that's the only thing I can think of, and I don't know that that's true or not. All of our RFPs that we have out there is when we put our original one out there, it led to a lead balloon, because nobody understands exactly the electric part of our RFP.
That's what I don't know.
In my opinion, the art, that's why I got the procurement policy, and I want clarification on the basement part of it is not public health, you know, that's, and I just don't, what would be just so awesome is if, uh, Jake could get his stuff done, because they can, it's like, what came first, the chicken or the egg? I, you know, Jake needs to get his stuff done before they'll move in, Jake can't get his stuff done because we can't get a, uh, contractor to come in and, and facilitate bossing people around who to start, when to start.
Right.
Um, and we just, we're just at a loss, how to, how to really get that done, the electrician, the electrical needs that he needs for his one room is different than what has to happen upstairs and.
And I still think we need the finessing of an electrician to help us write that up.
And Terry and I have talked about, just on these ARPA funds, we should maybe use that to hire somebody, cause the painting and the changing the bathroom is, is not a tough deal to, you know, I'll be more than glad to stand up there and say, paint this, paint that, paint this. Uh, we did talk, I talked to Marcy with the public health, and she thinks leaving the sinks are fine, she was gonna help kind of get that room along. So, that takes away that, uh, having to worry about the flooring in there, the plumbing up there, the drywalling in there, um, the baseboards are gonna have to all be replaced because of the way the sinks are in there, you're gonna be matched that up, and that's where the, the money.
The extent was coming.
And since the ARPA funds in the very beginning were designed in case we have another pandemic, you know, what could we change? The most important thing during a pandemic, the most important things during a disease control was washing your hands, and you've talked about that too, Ty. Why would we take out water and a way to wash hands in a public health area when you might have somebody in your office that you thought maybe had, you know, the first thing you do when they leave is go wash your hands, you know, you've got a little kid, you know, chewing on a rattle, take it over there and wash it, and you get, you know, you can make your little coffee in there, or, you know, I just don't see what needs to be gone in the office.
To people with TB and that still is around.
Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands, that is, is still gonna be a medical facility, you know, so, uh, in offices that, you know, you see the spaces that they're, now they're in a cubicle, you know, so you're gonna have an office and your desk and there'll be water, and, you know, a lot of those people, I don't know, so.
And you never know if they'll have to switch offices around or add people.
That's right, that's right, and if we would have another pandemic, we would be so thankful that we have extra sinks that we can wash hands, wash hands, wash hands. So I pulled out our, uh, RFPs for both of them, and kind of revisited all of that. So, last week, when I kind of, and this can all go onto the agenda to actually talk about, but we need to make sure that we have something to talk about. Um, my proposal would be that we would have.
That hasn't been a problem.
You guys, this is.
You can have my, I yield my time.
I propose that, uh, Jake redo his, uh, RFP to include his own, uh, electrical and his equipment and his HVAC and all of that, and ours just pertains to our.
So he got a separate HVAC for that room itself, yeah.
Separate kind of door, you know, when I talked about, we took that wall out, well, he wants that to be the cinder block also, okay, all right.
Need to be cinder block though?
I don't know, I don't know, but.
Do a stand on Adam, mom, probably.
Yeah, well.
Transmit it, we might get one.
I'm really thinking though that.
At that point, it's not gonna matter.
Right, but I don't feel that it should be up to the board supervisor to decide, well, Corey, yeah, we could have great.
Just to get, ask someone that has.
I have, I have.
Okay.
Says it's excessive.
But that's.
I don't know, we might have a different opinion.
He does, he does, he does. He does.
Way different opinion.
Wait, 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 wait. Um, so I wanna maybe get it on the agenda to rediscuss it, and then there's another week that goes by.
I guess you, part of this is what you were talking about earlier, what's our job description? Our job description is say, hey, this is the money you have, work with it.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, yes, you'd have it all encased in lead and copper and every other thing.
Yep.
But you're not getting that.
Yeah, I, I.
Kind of like we're trying to do with public health upstairs, like, you know, they wanted to gut it and redo it all, and we're like, you can move in the way it is, paint the walls and.
That, everybody that I take in there, that's exactly what they say.
So what I'm hearing, what you're saying, clarify, we really need to set a dollar amount and tell public health, bring them back in and say, here's your money.
Well.
Well, you already said that to them, but even Jake's part.
Jake's part.
Right.
Sort of.
Yeah.
The money, the biggest problem I heard out of Jake's deal was the water line above it. I'm not much of a plumber, but I imagine I'd give me a half hour, I could have.
And the water's off over there, so, but.
But for me to do that, I'm not.
So that's why I passed the procurement policy around to see how we can get it off the mark. Because what we don't wanna do is be, uh, guilty of not following our own procurement policy, which is a hundred thousand dollars. So how much is Jake's, you know?
Fifty-one or fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so he does need to go through all of this because it's less than a hundred.
You can't pick his out of it.
So, okay, so a hundred thousand, how, if he does fifty and we do fifty, that's a hundred thousand.
Right.
And I can't imagine how upstairs would be fifty thousand dollars.
Right, no, painting on some doorwork, it should be.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna retract that statement. Concrete's gonna be probably twenty, twenty-five to take that all out and put it back in and rebuild that wall, so there we go.
We're gonna be over a hundred.
Yeah, we're gonna be over a hundred. So.
I think we actually were heading mine to fifty at one point.
Cuz I thought that Region twelve was gonna be, but they don't have Arizona missions insurance, so if they forget something uh, for the, uh, IT room, they don't have insurance that was, that would, that we could fall back on and say, well, you guys didn't give us the right. They just don't, don't qualify for that part of it, and I can't see having them just do the upstairs, and we still got the downstairs, you know, so.
Right, we can't have an upstairs without the IT.
Right, 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 so I wanna crack the egg. Yeah, so I really, I really think that this needs to be an issue on the table every week until we work through it. I want direction and guidance on, um, how to keep it moving. I will also pass around this is what stopped us from, you know, having that kind of an expense. And these people would only work if that highlighted areas, what the scope of work was gonna cost, and that's why we pulled back on that, so. Um, I'm just asking for guidance cuz I want to have a ribbon cutting. In that, that other building, people still are very interested in it, wondering if there's a time. So there's like a lot of moving parts on not just sitting here, um.
Right, so that phone call I got while you were in the office from Colin?
Yes.
He was asking about the resolution that this board did March twenty eighth, no, April twenty eighth, whatever day it was. Whatever day it was, um, making that, um, revenue, the ARPA funds.
Right.
Whatever that, I can't even think, my words aren't coming to my mouth. Yeah, we moved it, yeah.
Which is per.
So I don't know if he's working on, your question about the procurement policy is where I'm getting at with that.
Before it moved into that.
Right.
We followed the ISACs.
We needed to follow the procurement.
Ours always, never ever, ever was it going to be, cuz we got less.
And I don't think this even changes that, to be honest with you.
No, no, we're making, it, that's where it got balled up for six months.
Right.
Tired of fighting with people.
No, I know, so I, I guess part of what I need to know too is, do we want Tom to keep going?
Yes.
I think so, I think we, cuz that was the problem with the first RFP.
Yep.
Is that it lacked technical, electrical information for them to follow.
And when I hear from Region twelve then, that the electrical is too technical for them to tackle.
And I don't think it's as technical as they think, but anyway.
And actually, it just kind of, okay, we have one now, that's working just fine. Why are we reinventing the wheel just cuz it's a different building? Why has it become so complicated?
Right.
Just cuz it's in a different building.
Right.
And I go back and say, well, this building was a doctor's office previously, so they had to have had. You know, yeah, they did take their stuff.
Oh, I know, and I think the only, I think the only difference is wherever they plan on having those refrigerators and freezer to store the meds, that's where that, um, what is, what are those called, APCs? Or it's a surge protector kind of thing, to ensure that, and the generator, to ensure that they don't ever stop running.
Yes.
That is the most technical part of this whole electrical plan, is ensuring that that area.
Generator.
Generator and surge protect and all that kind of stuff.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Which hangs on the wall.
And the big freezer.
Making sure the IT room has what they need.
Yes.
That, those are the two biggest, everything else is general stuff, and it's probably already there.
I don't have a generator yet, but I got both that.
That's, and Terry just nailed it on the head, it's probably already there.
That's right, most of it is.
This was the original one.
Get me off.
Cuz it did.
Start, I have been, I start, and I'm not looking at the bird in here.
Yeah.
Okay. How are you doing, Gene? Do you yield back the floor?
I give the floor back, and I apologize, but it was kind of a.
No, you had a lot, you haven't talked a lot.
Let me know how you want this on the agenda for next week, uh, before Friday.
Dave, you've got it for me.
You'll have to do it this second, before Friday.
Send me this rocket.
I'll be glad to come in and do conference calls, I'll be glad to meet with Tom.
I'm building a building now.
Okay, I'll get a hold of Tom.
Thank you. I won't talk next week at all.
No.
Alright, I'm gonna hand it over to Dave, you got a little bit of stuff running on it, you got stuff?
No, I yielded my kind, I was in Arizona.
How much do you have?
Player, I won't talk next week.
Just move back, okay, Dave.
A whisper.
You wanna bet on that? It's your bow bar or the floor is yours?
Thank you, um, couple things, not, not a lot, uh, actually one on, Colin, you had some reseating down on the lawn? That's a good, and really spotty.
Yeah.
I was looking at our buffalo grass, that is not greening up yet, but I'd say it should take a while.
It's been heat for that.
Right.
It's been too cold for it.
Yep, I didn't think that one, I mean, that one looked pretty.
It came real good, yeah.
Better than what it.
There's some problems, spots there where the salt runs off every year.
Yeah.
But I don't know what else to do with that, other than take a page out of Arizona people, put artificial dirt down there.
We talked about that.
I like it.
Yeah, um, we never talked about that.
It's easy to mow.
Yeah, no, not too much, um, John just noticing it, but, I mean, I think opioid conference coming up, May twenty fourth, fifth, I did get signed up for that.
Thank you.
Um, Terry did as well.
Did you know what Colin did?
I do not, I think signup is still open, but complimentary rooms.
complimentary rooms are not available.
I got a new set.
Which I'm waiting to hear back from anyway, so I don't know.
I know, it sounded like we wouldn't find out right away.
Right.
I don't know, I'd have to reread that, it was more than a day ago, so. Craig, I appreciate your emails on the twenty eighty, I do think we do anything with Imagination Station, that yes, we, it is. Etiquette to bring everybody into the table, and I appreciate that.
I don't.
Whether we stay in it or whatever we decide to do down the road, I, I just, it is good to have all players involved.
I don't, I don't, yeah, but I don't think even when you guys brought that up last week, it wasn't that you had plans to do something.
No, I was just thinking out loud and talking about where we sit as a county and.
And that's been discussed actually in, in meetings over there.
I think as a board, we could talk about it without having those other entities present, but I don't think we wanna take any action. Right, right, I got from Mike, it's like, I hate to see you guys take some action without us.
No, and I, I.
Being aware, being told beforehand, cuz I mean, if we're funding it by thirteen thousand, they need to find someone else to kick in that money.
Right, but I, I think that's a good point, I mean, yes, we can discuss what we sit as a county, but.
No, I'm not, I'm not against fun, keeping that funding stream going, but the only way that I'd wanna get out of that twenty eighty agreement is if we can channel that to where it could be used for some of them other.
I.
Instead of continuing to focus it on that building, just give them, and make it equal to the three major ones to say, we're gonna give you fif- each fifteen thousand a year to keep you going, I mean, for wages or what have you. Cuz that thirteen housing, well, it helps with the operations, it's kind of locked up in just that building.
And the city owns the building.
Could we have a line item called Crawford County, uh, childcare that, you know, we, no?
No, we definitely could, in next year's budget, we could definitely put that in.
If we got any money, state keeps taking away our money, we ain't gonna have much money to hand out.
But I, I, I know what you're saying, maybe get out of the twenty eighty as far as a building, and it's just thinking out loud, as far as a, a building twenty eighty agreement where you do have line item on the air, area fifty-one budget that's childcare. And each one, each three, you get, here's your, do what you need to do with it to stay operating.
Right, I, that's kinda, now that we do, and.
It's still like the audit of, I don't know, like, I mean, do what you wanna do, but.
Well, right, right, and I think, you know, if there are five oh one C three, the county still needs to be in a twenty, needs to be in an agreement with them, so they understand what the spending ramifications are, what they're required to do and to report back to you, but more a change of specification rather than just a building owner agreement.
Right.
More of a daycare operating agreement. But I was glad you brought that up, and something we can always talk about moving forward. Then the other thing I was gonna talk about is, of course, with the information back and forth with Representative Holt, with our property tax changes, that's kind of moving forward, reading some of their line items, what is looking like a hundred million of property taxes across the state could be cut.
That's the number I heard.
Not that you average out amongst every company, if you average that out, there's basically a billion dollars accounting, and granted, the bigger counties will be more, more than us, but still, it's a huge chunk of money, revenue for counties and cities that we will not see. Um, the other thing that I, I, I'm glad Steve talks with us, but I still missing the boat as far as, you know, the sixty-five-year-old, um, tax exemption, that's gonna be sixty-five hundred dollars. It's an exemption, that's on us again. The veterans is gonna be doubled to four thousand exemption and changed from a credit to an exemption, it's on us again. It's like going out to eat and telling the waiter, I'm gonna give you a two hundred dollar tip, and hey, leaning over your buddy, it's like, I'll go pay him.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, and it's, I know what they're trying to do, but it's.
So how does the exemption work? Tell me in my mind how that works so that we end up paying for it.
So like a credit to state, correct me, I misspeak, but the credit would be paid back by the state to us, probably get backfill. An exemption just comes off, and we're gonna take that off of your taxes.
See those taxes.
And you don't get a flex in as a county.
So it's on us.
You never see that revenue.
It was just like, on a small scale, we were kind of playing with the volunteers, where we were gonna backfill with other monies to to let notice a loss in their taxes, but now we're just gonna notice a loss.
Well, and what kind of bites you is, the state created this as a benefit for seniors and then for veterans, which, which is fine, that, that was their choice to do it. But now they're, they're literally forcing it onto our expense, you know, it's now it's an expense of, for us. And they're forcing that on to us, and no different than the thing with the sheriff here a year and a half or two years ago. So they create unfunded mandates as they're bragging about how they're gonna take money away from us.
No different than all systems permit, we're gonna allow heavier roads, or loads to damage your roads, and you have to abide by it and.
And all these extra expenses that'll end up coming along with it, then fall on the backs of our local taxpayers, or at least of this board here. You know, and so then the things like the childcare money, at some point, there's no way we can afford things like that. I mean, as important as that is to our local area families and businesses, we're not gonna be able to afford things like that in the future at the rate things are going. I mean, and, and on top of it, with the, with the child, or with, excuse me, with the veterans thing, and the, and the, uh, seniors exemptions, not only did they actually hand it over to us, but they increased it before they handed it over to us. I mean, really, you know, I mean, just, just start to wrap your mind around, I mean, it's like somebody else spending your houses, at, at your money at home. You, you get my drift, I mean, it's just.
It's called a wife.
I'm offended by that, but, no. My husband's a big spender, I know you are.
I'm not mine to do that.
Ty, it is frustrating, just cuz we're, we're already bare bones of what we provide for services, we're already very prudent with our tax money.
Oh, we're trying to be, and this board has really worked hard, boards that I, you know, since I've been here. I mean, I can't speak for board before me, but they always looked pretty frugal from when I was sitting on that side of the banister, but.
I know there is some adjustments within the, the property tax bill as far as, um, what your assessed values increases are, if you're over that caps. But it still seems to me that they're targeting a certain few counties that are over their limits, and they wanna bring them back down, and it's gonna.
Has really hurt the rural county.
It's us, out here in the rural county.
Four counties are the ones that are gonna feel it the worst.
Yeah.
And did you get, Dave, on that, the weight thing from DOT, that it's not gonna include any gravel roads? Are gonna be excluded from that? Did you, is that what you got from ISAC or what they? The reading of the bill, that's what I understand on the amendment on there, not include gravel roads.
But it says farm-to-market roads, some of our farm-to-market roads are gravel roads, so I think there's a gray area within it, like, well, what actually is? And then who's gonna, and then you'll still go back to who's gonna police it.
Yeah.
They could be on a gravel road, and, well, I got all systems permit.
Yeah.
We don't have.
Going on the one that's not.
Deputies out on gravel roads very often do.
Oh, but the deputies aren't, you know, they aren't equipped with scales and all that stuff to go out, they're only vehicles in the state are them white towels. The polar mirror, that's the only people that are equipped to go out there and mount, now a deputy could haul a vehicle to an elevator scale, I knew better.
I think it'll be treated as, if I got this permit, I'm gonna go where I need to go now. Cuz there's no, there's no, no way to enforce.
And ISAC still has not come out and said they were against that, right?
No, they're registered undecided in reason that they did that, it's, they're playing the, their chips, or their we, they wanted to get certain things in with the engineers, and some of the, you know, that they needed to get in, and they said, if we register against, we're not gonna be invited to the table, and I know Steve said, yes, you are, but they've been there long enough, they know. They said, we can salvage what we can by being undecided, or we can register against and lose all talking points. So, and they're having to play politically.
Farm-to-market roads are gravel in Crawford County.
Got the guy right here, his timing is perfect.
Uh, I couldn't tell you how.
Are there a lot, or are there?
Yeah, you know, I agree, I'll get that for, there are quite a few miles, yeah, there's, there's a lot of miles.
Okay.
There are far, I guess, farm-to-market class, you know, a couple hundred probably, and all the paved roads are, and there are a number of gravel roads.
Right, okay, that's probably your. But there are a number of them, okay, I was just curious how many I did.
Yeah, yeah, and so, you're talking about how ISAC and the County Engineers Association, so I texted Lyle, I said, why are we registering, I decided, against a bill that clearly we're not in favor of, and I never heard back from him. So it's one and only time I've never heard back.
I, I talked to Lucas, and I was just telling Mr. Craig, I talked to Lucas, Lincoln and Jamie about that on our last legislative update. They said, there are certain things that the engineers wanted in there, that Lyle, we can make do with this, if we get X, Y, and Z in there. And they said, if we don't get a seat at the table, if we register against.
We never had had a seat at the table, they, they've never, they've never had a seat at the table. And so, you know, it's disappointing for me that we basically, and if you look at.
Most of your engineers are against it.
However, if you look at the votes, there was not one politician that voted against it. Not, no Democrat, no Republican, they all voted in favor, that only tells me one thing, there's a very powerful person behind it. And I'm not gonna bring it.
And they, and they haven't been elected.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly, remember the name I gave you?
No, yeah, no argument either.
Yeah, and so, uh, so very influential, yeah, and so, uh, yeah, yeah, at the end of the day, that's, I mean, that's just politics, that's what's happening, you know, and so, uh, now the board has the option to say, we're gonna, you write a letter.
now, the board has the option to say, we're gonna, you write a letter to the DOT stating that sixty percent more stress on our our roads, we're not, we're not in favor of it now, you know.
DOT has to grant that.
They have to grant that, yeah.
Right, you can't just opt out, you have to send them a letter and then DOT has to
Exactly, you have to justify why you're saying you don't want that on your roadway.
What are you hearing about if we would do that, opt out? Like these guy farmers in the fall, still having their two months where they can go above eighty.
I don't know where they're at with that, legislatively, however, I mean, I still, I, you know, a lot of the people in the industry, they don't wanna spend spend five hundred dollars, you know, the the farmers, the everyday farmer out here doesn't wanna spend five hundred dollars to pay for that extra license. They just want the ninety thousand pounds. Guarantee you, this is not being driven by the ag sector.
No, no, I'm
So.
We're gonna use them roads every day, we don't want to tour it up.
Well, now you step back and you think about it, now who's gonna use the roads out here?
And industries supporting them.
Is this gonna change what happens out here? Maybe, I don't know, you know, is it, are we gonna all of a sudden see, you know, they have to pay for that license? And I think that'd be an interesting piece of information, is how many of these are ag-related licenses and how many of them are other industry-related licenses. That'd be an interesting piece of information, cause I think you'd probably be surprised, maybe not, I don't know.
That could be, that's one of the percentages deals, though, it could be skewed heavily on the ag side. But on a daily basis, the ag side is not using it as much as the the lump of your contractors or whatever, you know.
Rock trucks, even the ones that support you.
Yeah, I
I've had calls from them.
And and so
Being interesting.
You know, it's it's overlooked, it's 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 overweight creep, it continues to happen.
Yeah.
There's certain industries that wanna haul more and feel that it's justified and and so
I'll say the same thing I say to everybody, tires on the ground, axle spacing, and you talk about bringing the higher interstates in, you 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 got my attention, otherwise, you're just talking about destroying roads for that's, we're gonna have to try to figure out how to fix, and they ain't gonna have money.
What you always say about the very companies that are damaging the roads are then
Gonna turn around and be the ones to get a fix. If we can afford it.
Oh, plot thickens.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's You know, remember, I mean, we tried to fight the battle.
Yes, we did.
And got, got absolutely nowhere, so
We got to the top of the dome.
That was a great picture.
That was me. Everybody wanna go down and try to fight, so you can get a picture of the top of the dome?
It really is cool, yeah. Get up there and and don't do it on a day like yesterday or someday. You might end up in Iowa City on top of that one. This is an interesting picture, this is a single Marion County, but if you kind of, you know, you, someday you think you got problems, it's like, oh, that's one, that's one big, that's one big hole.
You know what caused that?
No, they're trying to figure it out, the engineer said this, he said, you know, who's ever dealt with single, there's apparently a coal mining area there, so yeah, they could, might have some connection to that somehow. You know, he didn't really ask that, but it was just like, wow.
Would you ever be concerned, you know, we took the tour in Ford Dodge, and you go underneath the quarry there. And I know they have the pillars and the granite ceiling, but we we were there, how much area, vast mile by, what is it, a couple miles? You know, a tremor or anything, you think that you'd have a scenario like that, but
Well, with all those voids, I mean, if you, if the earth starts moving with all those voids, something's gonna move, you know, we're not, you know That'd be an interesting tour again, I know, you know, you've never been there, you've never been there, but I mean, it's basically fifty by fifty columns of limestone are there, and then there are voids fifty by, you know, these, it's just like, it's like a checkerboard. Yeah, and you're three hundred feet underneath their surface when they turn the light on, it's dark.
Never ever seen anything, I mean, that black in my life.
How long do they keep the light on?
It's dark, it's dark, but yeah, that'd be a good tour, I should, you know, like a cat tour tour, you know, as well, uh you know, with COVID, all of that stuff just stopped, and so, you know, they'd be good things to do again. You know, and I I know I talked to Brennan a couple of times once last fall, and then again, this winter, yeah, he's still just really skittish, you know, and so, I'll I'll check into both of those, yeah, cause they they both be interesting.
We haul into the mines, the caves, they call them.
The unique thing about that is the people in the winter months, they're on a day shift, you never see the sunlight.
Yeah, it's underneath, I mean, you don't, you realize That's where the road, the the crushed limestone we put on our roads, comes from there. That's why I tell people, I say, you think about it, it's three hundred feet under the earth surface, they're sitting there blasting and pecking away, bringing up, crushing. Put it on a pile, put it on a train, bring it down here to get on our roads, I mean, there's a lot that goes into just getting it crushed limestone for the roads.
How long can they mine that, I mean, is it just
Generational levels.
Generational levels, wow.
They said there's enough here to
Anything like that in Crawford County.
But it ain't close to us, ours is really, really deep.
Our challenge is more, how do we get it here?
So, I just got one permit there, uh, crossing the construction projects, graves, you know, like I said, they pulled off So they must be putting stuff back together, he told me, he'd call me whenever he uh got ready to fire up. It's uh, it's actually worked out really well, because we're pulling gangbusters on the paving project, they got there's three lifts, they're gonna go on this entire section, so they've got two lifts on the area north of Highway thirty. They'll have the first lift down, uh, South Highway thirty today, probably have all of the, what we call the intermediate lifts done by the end of the week. Next week through the surface, after that, do the shouldering and so, weather permitting, and everything keeps working.
You got a lot of rain coming.
We do, and that'll stop them, that'll stop them.
Yeah, it's gotta rain first, but it's scheduled for next
But the point is, they are
Wouldn't hurt my funds if it rained good for a weekend.
So, um, great crew, we're south of town here, I said, you know, kudos to the guys, they got one whole mile of grading done. And a bridge done, one in May first, and moved on to the second one, so, that's pretty good, good group. I know I say that a lot today.
They are.
So, but they're right south of Denison, on two ninety, if you wanna go out, take a look, so Yeah, so I mean, it it, that's, they they get after it, and then the bridge crew, they're down by Dan checking yours, that Rainbow Trust Bridge. We got some deck patching we're gonna do on the pavement, had a couple of ends there that we're gonna do, kind of in between all that, but they're down there working on that, so that one, we're just gonna take it up, take the approach span out, be piling under it, set it back down, and Dan's okay with that. You know, it'll be a bridge you can cross with an empty semi, still kind of a needle bridge on a curve, it's at Rainbow Trust. I don't know, part of me says we gotta keep at least one or two of those around, just, you know. It really is, yeah, I think there've been a lot of class, your senior pitchers taking on it, it's just, not very many of those, and he's okay with it, he can get across cars pickups, empty semi, so
We grew up with Chad, Dan's son Chad is my classmate, a good friend of mine, and we grew up, I didn't, playing on that bridge all the time with Chad, and all those guys hanging around, and you know, just neat memories, neat memories, yeah.
It is, so, that, that's what we're gonna do with that, and then move on, and the one down one hundred twentieth is open, and get rid of there's happy. It turned out to be a really nice bridge there, so uh, roadside seating, kind of waiting through weather to warm up, and things to take off here, but it'll start springin' in probably in another couple weeks. Positions, we've got some applications, we have both for part-time fill, so, we, Brian Krant is gonna be our part-time truck driver in the semi veil area, so he'll be driving out of Denison, so we got that filled, we hired that Antonio Rodriguez for the bridge crew, we're not great or time, and, you know, we've got a full-time position open there, I'm just still kind of sitting, hey, I'll be full-time positions I wanna fill. We'll see how that'll works out, and then, uh, we're taking the applications for the Ricketts, motor greater, Dow City Truck Driver. So, I think we'll get those filled here soon. Tower Building Delivery.
Are you getting some good apps?
I'm not getting very many. But I'm getting some good ones, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Just one good one.
That's all you need, two, maybe two of them. Yeah, yeah, but, I think we'll be all right. It's interesting, I was telling Dave, I said, when I first started, it wasn't unusual to get forty or fifty applications for an opening. That's just kind of telling, telling times, so
Why the, because next generation, if they wanna work, they have a world of opportunity, take your pick where you wanna go.
Wide world that you're willing to, yes, yeah. I don't know, you know, I was talking to Dave earlier, I said, do you personally know anybody that could work that isn't?
That could work.
That could work, yeah. It isn't, or that, you know, isn't the
I wouldn't, I wouldn't use us as the typical demographic for America, though, for a rural county like this, I wouldn't, yeah. I think if you get into the heavy urban areas, you'll probably find a few more of those people that could, that
But you know, we see even at the co-ops, you where we used to have whole bunch of retired farmers go drive tender or work at a co-op in the spring or fall, and there's less and less of those retired farmers.
Wanna do it.
And then less and less where the co-op could draw off.
Ten years, the baby builders.
Yeah, you look at each demographic.
We're at the
There's not enough of them.
Have an apple that's been short.
Way up, so, the Tower Delivery, uh, we're gonna meet at Dow City on Friday. Take a look at the sites, I told the guys, you know, the foreman, you know, take a look at the sites, and just kind of picture trying to get a semi loaded with you know, a little boy trailer, that's that's kind of what we're doing here, trying to try to pull, you know, in fact, I said, take a little boy trailer drive it in there, another good old fashioned way, we'll find out if it works or not, so, they they may have done that. Um, you know, but I said, just, that's what we gotta do, we gotta get a little boy trailer loaded, um, into those locations. So I I think they might, you know, like Dow City and the
Manila one, I think that might be the most challenging.
Manila's gonna be a little bit more, cause it's gonna be even tight getting in there.
Yeah, you know, so, it'd be nice to know, like, on an aerial, where where are you gonna set the crane? You know, that, you know, cause they gotta set the crane, get the truck, turn the truck around, or just pull it up, I guess, pick it, set it maybe back out.
Maybe bring a aerial photographs of each site when we go do our thing Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
So that he can kind of point, yep, this is where I wanna set it.
So, okay.
What time are we doing that?
Eight thirty at the Dow City site. And then we'll just kind of go around from there, so, Chris Clark, he's a short timer, he's we got eight days left.
Eight more days.
Eight days a week, but anyhow, so, uh, he's actually gonna come in on the sixteenth, which is board day. Yeah, um, and so I asked him to come in and just work that day, that'll be his last day, I wanna recognize him here, I got a plaque I wanna give him. And then, uh, he really, you know, didn't want anything, but I I said, well, we'll do something, I'll take him down, have lunch with him down at the restaurant down here, the Mexican restaurant, inviting whoever wants to come, you know, join us, we'll just
Oh, I go have lunch.
And the bridge crew, well, yeah, we'll do lunch that day, and so, some of the bridge crew, fast guys just have a few people to find that.
How many years?
Thirty-five, yeah, yeah, so moving off, been a great employee, so, we're a long guy. Before we go to the city, we, I could, so you had a budget amendment, and I just wanted to, you know, this is kind of my breakdown. You know, we we uh, we save money on, like, the gravel and your year's been dry, that's all saying, winters haven't been bad, but um, the uh, the item where we really got named is that seventy-two hundred, which that's your fuel and your materials. You know, fuel cost has gone up three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand, you know, the dump is basically what I had budgeted. Um, and, you know, so this is a summary of the four categories, this is what I have to do for a DOT amendment, and and so if you, if you wanna look at any of the detail, I'd be more happy to share that with you. But, um, that's kind of a breakdown, so so if you look at the differences, the numbers in in parentheses are basically an increase in spending there. So, that's kind of all right. And the seven thousands, the engineering, we're just, you know, we got a lot of stuff, we're trying to move forward. And then I got a little bit on the roadside there, trying to figure out whether they're gonna give me that tractor, I'm gonna have to pay for that before June first, if I don't get that, I don't need it. So I haven't been able to get confirmation from Ryan, so, just kind of a there, and kind of great for your information, I mean, I've pretty much always done a budget amendment every year for twenty-three years. It's just unpredictable nature of what we have, and the budget year ending right in the middle of construction season, so
So when you give us this sheet that you gave us, and that, when I add up the ones in parentheses, that comes to five forty and then you add up the ones that are positive, and that comes to five ninety-five, I guess, so is that just a wash or?
Well, what what I, uh, what I'm, I'm not amending those other ones, okay?
Okay.
I'm just, here's the amended amount in the far right, the other ones, I'm showing you the difference, if I spend less, it's not a problem, if I spend more, it is.
Gotcha.
In these individual categories, so if I spend less in that category, the twenty series, that's not, that's not an issue. If I spend more, and so what I'm saying is, I'm not really gonna spend, I'm not gonna amend for the entire amount that I'm spending more, I'm gonna try to kind of balance, you know, overall, but I I gotta, I gotta kind of watch
Okay.
The categories where I go over is what, so the DOT, you're allowed to go up to ten percent over any one of those four categories. Okay, without doing a budget amendment, um, you know, so, kind of, kind of close there, I I I could probably sneak by. Okay, but, um, but it's better to amend it than to get a little paint note that you went over, and so so you can go over up to ten percent in any one of the four categories, but you can't go over any amount of the total. Okay, and then that's the same thing with the auditors, but is I can't go any, see, I, you, you have spending, a spending authority, it's a cap. And that total dollar amount is the most I can spend legally, okay? And so, you wanna watch that, but then I also have to, have to watch the individual categories for the DOT budget, to make sure I don't go over ten percent. Or, that makes sense to you, so okay, uh, and again, I've got the whole spreadsheets of all the details, if anybody wants to take a look at that more happy to go over in detail with you, uh, the city, uh, meeting that we've got scheduled for one o'clock, and that still work for everybody. Share this, yeah, unfortunately, I was thinking that maybe but Well, really, here's, 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 here's what I need to get to, is, is, you know I mean, the bridge, it's a city's bridge, I, you know, I was a little cautious here because But, but I, you know, as I told, or, you know, I'm looking out for the area, and, and it is our foreign market extension. So we have some interest in seeing it move forward, but the bridge has substantial corrosion, okay, it's not fatal. Bridge isn't gonna collapse, but it has substantial corrosion on the, on the girder joints, and I can show you pictures of it. So it needs to be replaced, and we posted it two years ago, at one posting, now they lowered, they came back and lowered the posting because of concern with. You know, condition, and so it's only gonna get worse, so we, you know, so it needs to be replaced, in my opinion. And, you know, and, and so I believe the city believes that as well, and so what we need to do is we, you know, kind of need to sit down and figure out. Who's gonna do what, and, and that's what this is about, and so the, the railroad, I've been communicating with them. We're to the point now where they want somebody to commit to a fifty thousand dollar, you know, payment for what they call PE. It's project evaluation, so the Unit Pacific Railroad hires a third-party firm to basically manage these projects for them. And so that's who you're paying, is that third-party firm, they kind of, they, they run interference, and they, they know what the UP wants, they just, they just manage it for them. And that's estimated to cost fifty thousand, so they want somebody to, you know, sign off on that agreement, so that's what kind of precip, you know. Said, hey, let's get together, who's gonna do this?
So they hire the guy that we pay for?
That's, that's right.
We're gonna make sure I understood that, right?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And like when somebody's gonna come into our area and do a project, they got, you know, pipeline or.
Yeah.
Turbines got a paper.
Yeah.
So what I did was, I listed all of the things that I can think of, that are the different administrative. Items that are gonna have to be dealt with here, and I tried to assign a cost to them, so that's what's on this.
Amazing, six hundred dollars, no, administrative fees.
Well, not really, there's sixty thousand bucks for construction.
Oh.
And then there's, but yeah, you know, on a, on a project like this, it's not, it, it would not be unusual for. From start to finish, to have ten to fifteen percent. Wrapped up in, in all the administration, this is gonna be a complicated project, because we gotta deal with the UP. You know, and, and so, so really, two things need to happen.
One, the only rail lines that are underneath it, to UP?
Yeah, one is. We have to get some consensus on who's gonna do what, and then draft an agreement, and I can put the agreement together. Just state, you know, this will be an attachment to it, the understanding that these are just estimates, I have no idea, it's, I mean, this is just kind of a. I think this is what I caused. Interesting, prepare more all that, but we really, you know, like I was talking to Rod Vance with Kelvin Burns and Associates, their consultant that does. Bridge design for us, they were the inspector, they're doing inspection on that, and he said, Paul, I say, you know, we, we really don't even know. Because the UP is continually changing their guidelines, you know, so. And I don't know who the city's gonna hire, that's, I hope they hire, that's what, why we recommend, because we have a relationship with them, and they've been inspecting the bridge. But that'll be the city's call, I, I believe.
Is the grant amount fixed, regardless of what the cost of the bridge is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so that's, that's why I say this is an error, is an estimate, now, we haven't got the raise grant yet. Okay, so let's take the two point four eight million out, and the five hundred thousand, and put one point five million in there. Because that, the city knows they have, okay, so the number down here then. Changes by about three quarters of a million dollars for each, if that's, you know, and I know. Todd, you've kind of expressed, you know, you know, so we, if we don't get the raise grant, it defaults back to. This city federal bridge money, which would be one point five million, instead of two point eight plus five hundred thousand. So the raise grant comes through, I'm really hopeful, I'm optimistic that it will. So, so then the question is, is do we split equally then the construction cost, if the raise grant doesn't come through? And that's really kind of a hard decision.
Yeah, kind of ours.
But she's not the raise grant?
Do you have any idea when we know?
I think in June.
You're still, the thing where the raise grant has good.
I feel really good about it, Dave, because we're in a historically disadvantaged area, we're collaborating with two groups, there's two groups. There's a lot of good things about our brand, but. So, so anyhow, I wanted to lay this out, I kind of wanted to, before, before about it, before we all get into reading this afternoon, and. I mean, this is one scenario, I didn't put the other scenario on here, I could, but I mean, just, just keep in mind that. The raise grant brings about another million and a half dollars to the table, if we're successful in that.
The only thing I can see is it falls in the farmer market system, so we use the city limits. We just need to be somewhat cautious to. Know that's community that comes, and so, you know, that extension through X, Y, Z, counties in dire need of repairs. An estimate of three million dollars to fix it, how much is the county gonna participate?
Well, that's why.
That's, that's the only thing I'd be concerned.
Yeah, I mean, let's hope we get the raise grant. But if we don't, we'll, we'll have to kind of regroup it. You know, that the email I got about a month ago from the railroad was, okay, hey, here's where we're at, if you want to talk to us, somebody's got to sign this agreement and agree to pay fifty thousand dollars. It's like, we, we need to all get together and talk.
Yeah.
Are you kind of asking this board, though, for this meeting today? Their feeling on if we don't get the grant, if we're willing to, are we going to have a consensus before we go in?
Well, I think, I think it's important to know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to.
I, I don't either.
I think, I think it's important that, you know, as we go and meet with the city, kind of, you know, here's plan A, and here's plan B. Now, we don't have to decide today, but at some point, we gotta make a decision, because. Coordinating with UP Railroad is gonna have to start happening, and that just takes time.
So where are we gonna get these funds if the grant don't come?
They would have to come out of our, our PR fund.
To find BR.
That's the money that pays for the bridge over on L fifty-one, that's paying for the bridge replacement on R sixteen, so it would take. It would take three quarters of a million dollars out of that pocket, out of that, that fund.
So what we basically do is stop any further projects in the county, we rebuild them.
Well, it would, it would take one year's worth, well, not one year, because we only get about four hundred fifty thousand, so. Two years, it'd take a little over a year and a half, then, city's probably got a bigger challenge, coming up with seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Because they don't have a bridge fund, but we do.
I suggest we'd agree on this today, with the, and if the, that grant fell apart, we'd have to renegotiate.
Right, I think it's asking a lot to hypothetically, if, if, with all these ifs, to, to make a commitment.
Yeah.
That we'd have to live with.
Well, there's one if, if we get the grant, or if we don't.
Well, that's what I, that's what I mean, that's why. I don't know, the city will have the money, after they paid their cops, they're out.
Sorry. I mean, we all have, there's a certain duty and responsibility to take care of the infrastructure, okay? And so, the city has the ability to find, you know, there's always the ability to do geo find, you know, it's true.
Had their fourteen million dollars.
Yeah, so. Ask you what level they're at, but anyhow.
How much more they can bond, somebody there today will know.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's always options.
Jessica gonna be there?
No.
Well, it should be a relatively jeans there, not Jessica, so it won't be real long.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think, I think we've been very. I think we've been very proactive, and, and that, you know, we're willing to step up and do a lot of things here, you know. There's a lot of work there, and, and the fact that we were able to even be included in the grants, you know. You know, is, is pretty big, I think, yeah, so.
I mean, based on what Kyle said, but do we have precedent with the county in dealing with bridges in cities? Or in incorporated areas in the county, and those bridges go bad, is there things that we've had?
Historically, you know, we did over in Charter Oak, we helped, there's, it's right on the, it's kind of right on the fringe, you know. It's maybe part of its city, part of its county.
Vale.
But that is ours, that's not bad, because it's less than five hundred, that's ours. Or Vale, the bridge that we're gonna be replacing just south of Vale, on the pavement. One of the ground, we're completely out of that. See Manila, I think the county kind of helped, but that got city bridge money too, that got, you know. So we've kind of done some.
It's been a case by case basis.
It kind of has been, right, yeah, and so, back when they did the rehab in ninety-four, I think the agreement, you know, there was, there was some. Sharing there. Okay, I know, sorry.
Well, I had a personal waiting, otherwise I would let you go on.
Yep, so.
When you have something good to say, we listen, that's right.
So, thanks. We'll see, we'll see at one. And so this is really all I want to talk about, you know, I got the email from UP Railroad, it's like the brakes on.
This is put together, I think it should be pretty.
Yeah, the, the key is, they're gonna have to budget, I mean, moving forward with the bridge, they're gonna have budgets, money to pay for. The things other than construction, and.
There is a substantial.
And that's a guess, you know, so what I really like to see today is get some consensus on who's gonna do what, and have them agree, you know. Who, who are you gonna hire, who's a consultant, you know, because. We've been basically paying Kelvin Burns for the little phone calls and the estimates so far. For the raise grant and all of that, we've just kind of been, I just said.
Their turn to start adding enough.
Well, they gotta hire somebody, and so, yeah.
I'm sure you're gonna, good three of you guys look after our rivers quite well. Okay, next thing on the agenda, we're running about six minutes late. You have the chair, please come forward. Golden Hills RC and D.
Yes, sir. Right, colorful. That's a photo by one of our team members. So I'll introduce myself first, I am Karen Morgan with Golden Hills Resource Conservation and Development. I'm basically just here today to tell you about our organization, what we do. I don't know how much any of you know about our organization, we're based in Oakland, so we're fairly close. Back, we started in nineteen eighty-one as part of USDA NRCS. We were a branch of that organization, in about two thousand eleven, nationwide. The NRCS USDA chose no longer to fund RC and Ds. So many of the RC and Ds across the United States, they failed. Without that government funding, without that support through the NRCS. They did not make it, Golden Hills was really lucky, we had Shirley Fredrickson at that time, and she was very active in. The organization, she was very passionate, and we were able to pivot and become a nonprofit. So we still work, and I'm, I'll go on into, you know, a lot of this, I, I used to just. So we work in conservation, we work in many different areas, if you go back to. This page, it tells the five areas that we currently work in. We work in land stewardship, we work in water resources, we work in local foods. Arts and culture, and outdoor recreation and tourism. So we focus in those main five areas, we also help with grant writing and community support. So it all starts with our team, and I'll take you back to that. To that area right here, tells about our team. So as I said, I am the executive director with Golden Hills. We have Lance Frisboy, who took the beautiful picture on the front, he is our deputy director. His passion is outdoor recreation, hiking, biking. Prairie and the native prairie remnants that are across the state of Iowa. We have Jackie Johnson, who is our fiscal manager in our office, she keeps us straight with the books. And all of our filing and that sort of thing, we have Don Harder, who is our assistant, office assistant, she also helps with the filing. We have Sean Aver, who took over a lot of my original work. I was the watershed coordinator for the East and West Nish and Batna, through the Iowa watershed approach. Helping to improve resiliency, reduce flooding, improve water quality after the floods of two thousand eleven. So we received grant within the state of Iowa to help in those areas on East and West Nish. So with me taking the executive director position, obviously, we had to backfill my work, so we hired Sean. And he is working with all of that watershed, working with the solar water conservation districts. Within southwest Iowa, helping to write their financial plan, working with a community to implement. An area where they can have outdoor recreation, but yet protecting their wellheads, things like that. We also have Seth Brooks, who is in your outdoor recreation and tourism. He is very well-versed in blogging and drawing people into the area. Knows a lot about the outdoor recreation and is an excellent writer, he's also bilingual. So we're utilizing, we're utilizing a little bit in bringing in those that are underserved. And those that don't speak English as their native language, we have Jamie Fowler, she is our local foods coordinator. She's also a horticulturist, but she helps with local foods like Milk and Honey. Which is just right down here, we are their fiscal sponsor, and then she helps also to promote and to bring together local foods. Within the region, and Becca Castle, who works within our byways, she also does the arts and culture. Things like the art tour that we have in southwest Iowa, so we have a really strong team that works within these five areas. If you look at our map, that is on the second page. Look at this map. You can see our original core area is outlined in blue, but I don't know how many of you are familiar with John Thomas, I'm sure. Paul's worked with him quite a bit, he is actually based in our office, so he works within areas to the north. His region is actually the, the light pink that's outlined there, but we also work further north than what our original core area was. We have the low high track that is further north than our original area, we work with local foods, we work with individuals further north. So we have expanded our official footprint to include Manona, Crawford, Carroll, and Audubon counties. So that's why I'm here talking to you today, is because we are expanding that area, we like to get the word out that we're available. To help in these areas of local foods, outdoor recreation, tourism, water resources. Land stewardship and arts and culture, and that we have a team very close by that can help. You know, your local residents and others' organizations within the county in these areas. We're also looking for a representative, it does not have to be a county supervisor, it can be somebody within the county. That is very passionate about one of those areas, so we want somebody that really has an interest in what we do. Whether it be conservation, whether it be local foods, whether it be hiking or biking, or, you know, I laugh because. Whether it be conservation, whether it be local foods, uh, whether it be hiking or biking, or, you know, I laugh because, um, we have quite a few in our, in our office that love to bike, and I'm not sure that I stay on one, but. You know, like I said, I wanted to, to come and talk to you a little bit about what we do. You can read more about it. We do have the pages behind that tell a lot of the projects that we've done, um, the areas that we work, things, you know, that we're available for.
So where does the majority of your funding come from?
Grants. We are ninety-nine percent grant funded. We write our own grants.
So you get the same ones historically every year or not?
We don't. We do get some funding, like the Iowa byways funding that we receive, uh, but the Iowa watershed approach that I started as watershed coordinator is no longer. Um, it was a five-year grant to the state, and when that was expended, it was done. So we turned around and wrote an R C P P grant where we're partnering with John, um, on putting in bank stabilizations, um, letdown structures, working with local landowners to do cover crops, uh, to upland practices, to protect the watershed and to reduce erosion. But we wrote another five-year grant. So absolutely, the majority of our funding comes from grants. We do have three counties that have partnered with us that want a little bit more specific things for us to work on for the county itself, um, that have contributed fifteen thousand dollars apiece. And we do have donors. You know, we, we do work with Omaha Gives and other things as far as donors. But if we aren't out there writing grants, looking for donors and things like that, we would not survive.
What is the size of your budget?
We bring in, this year it's going to be about four hundred thousand dollars for projects. It just depends on what the projects are. The watershed work is our largest program right now. We're looking at growing the others more. Uh, local foods would be our second at this time. Uh, that grant is actually through the Builders Association, which is, used to be a part of Walmart and, or Builders Foundation, sorry, Builders Foundation, which used to be part of the Walmart Foundation, but has branched off. So we received, um, funding through them, through a grant, that they are paying for our local foods coordinator. Um, we're also working with Walmart and looking at writing some, some grants through Walmart Foundation and, and others, so.
Do you have a lot of conservation groups, county conservation that reach out to you to?
We do, we do. We work very closely with C C Bs as well as, like I said, the N R C S. One of my, when I was at the watershed coordinator, you know, obviously, the, in code, if you're a watershed management coalition, the N R C S, um, board is on your board as well, so you have a county supervisor, you have a board, or, um, a N R C S member and representative from any of the cities within that watershed. So we work really closely.
Nelson Park. The grant, grant writing for updating our water supply, our water wells.
We do not do that. We do not do source water. That, I don't know who your cog is. The reason we don't do it is because we partner with the cogs, like MAPPA, SWIPCO, I don't know who you have. Region twelve. We don't wanna duplicate what they're already doing. So we work more with your watershed, with the local landowners and the farmers. We do help with some of the protection around wellheads because native prairie is a really good, uh, cleaner of water. It takes a lot of those nutrients. It helps to clean the water around the wellheads, but we stay out of the source water area, just because we don't wanna step on toes. We don't want to duplicate. Yep.
Which someone might reach out to you with some help in regards to protecting a well ahead.
Sure, absolutely. And we can partner with your cog too, on, yes.
On this map, my question is, you know, how do, how do you move from the dark, you know, when you say that you have, uh, few projects? Is that, is that the basis of the coloring more projects?
Yes.
So if we go back here to your projects, just as an example, this first one. What kind of a project is that? Just so I can get a feel for.
Sure. That is, SWIPPE is the Southwest Iowa Food and Farm Initiative.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, um, brochure.
All right.
That we keep track of who those local producers are, that produce local foods.
Okay.
We have on our website, we also have it on our Facebook page. So we help promote.
Okay.
Local food producers. Like I said, like Milk and Honey, which is probably one of the most well-known ones up in this area. But all the way along, you know, in the counties that we work within, we want to promote.
Okay.
And, you know, that's Jamie's, that's the reason we've received that grant.
Okay.
That's Jamie's primary area of focus.
Very interesting to me.
Sure.
I'd like to move to a better color myself.
Well, we'd like to make you a better color, is what we're trying to do. Very nice, very interesting.
Well, thank you, Carrie.
Sure. And like I said, um, we're based right here, or in Oakland.
This was as of two thousand and nineteen, correct?
That's the last time that we did, um, a strategic.
Okay.
Yep.
Very interesting. Some good projects you have out there.
Thank you.
So do you guys think of anything, and if you think of somebody that would be a good member of our board, um, we meet on a, on a quarterly basis. But the board is involved, and we do want people that are interested in, in what we do. So if you have somebody from your county to speak up, please.
You know, we have a tourism coordinator in our C D C, somebody like that, kinda.
It would be, yeah.
You know, could you get, you had, you had, you already wrote it down?
Yeah.
So anyway, that was what I was sitting here thinking, that maybe Shani would have a beat, because you had more tourism and and arts and stuff, which.
I like to see it more of a, I guess I don't know what her conservation mindset is, but, I think, somebody like her with the conservation and, and, and some of that complimentary stuff.
It'd be awesome to have a representative.
Yes, and we do have, we have an opening on the board.
Who?
Okay.
Chris, or something like that, but I hope he's, he might be streaming the other day.
Yeah. Well, I'll think about it a little bit.
That sounds great. Just email me the ideas and we'll read that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming.
Yes.
Okay, next up on our agenda is, uh, discussed take action tax abatement, and I see the lane is where tax abatement thirty twenty-five, highway one forty-one, Manila, Mary, Mark and Mary Pop, new dwelling. I like new dwellings, new dwellings are my favorite.
So we have a couple of them. So the Mark and Mary Pop is along highway one forty-one at three hundred street. They're talking, uh, three hundred thousand dollar approximate cost, and they've done their building permit. They have not started construction, and they want the three-year, so.
There's a residence there.
Yes, yep, yep. So I would recommend we approve that one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve that tax abatement.
Mall bar makes the motion. Did you just second Jane? Ms. Hayden, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye.
So the next one is, um, over on one hundred and twentieth street north of Dunlap. So, um, two or three miles, and it's a Todd and.
Sabrina.
Sabrina, sorry, Cogdill. They currently live in Ankeny. Um, they're, he works in the ag chemical field. I'm not sure what she does, but um, they're building a new house there. It's a, um, approximately five acre, uh, old farm site. There's a couple of old ag buildings there in the, the nice grove and so forth, and so they're gonna build there. They're talking somewhere around the six hundred thousand dollar range. Have not started construction yet, and they want the three-year. They've got their building permits, so again, I recommend approval of that one.
Make the most, still prove that.
Ms. Hayden makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dozart. Any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Actually had a guy in this morning on another rural rez, building a house out in the country, out on the little small roads, so. I'm, I guess, somewhat thinking that, you know, I always look at single-family construction as kind of an indicator of a fairly good economy. I mean, you know, people have to have some confidence in it to build some houses. And, you know, when you're dropping five or six hundred thousand dollars, that's a, a pretty good hunk of change, so, I'm, I guess I kinda think that that's good news, but, so there's another one there, and.
I like when you see somebody moving back home.
We've had a pretty good number in the last, um, few months, guys, so I don't know exactly what it is, but.
Yeah.
So.
We have. We had to hit our average of five, we're ready for the year.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought, so.
That's kind of what I've always tried. We usually do five a year, and I think we've already, wherever we may, we've already.
I think at least.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll try to, let's get a number and email it to you, but like I said, I didn't have time to look this morning and see how many it's been. I would agree with you that there's been, I've been handful so far this year, so.
Even nice.
Usually it's, yeah, you know.
You need, need one of them nice exurb developments where there's a small acreage, or people slash, somebody that wants to get out of them.
Yeah, we're. Crawford County zoning rules are kind of good for development. They're, they're not real rigid, and so I, I think people were very surprised. This guy from Ankeny, you know, he says, yeah, I always owned that five acres, but I didn't know if I could build on it or not, you know, like Harrison County, I think has a ten acre, um, minimum or something like that, you know, which you can always ask for a variance, but, so.
Well, thank you. Keep promoting us.
Yeah, doing great. I think it's.
Hey, nobody here to defend them.
There you go.
I'm, I'm in favor of picking on Craig. He always seems to cost us money.
Can I bust down seriously?
Yes, please. We'll quit talking for a minute. What was it? Quick million dollars spent, Crawford County. Thank you. Craig, you're sure welcome to come forward. We just can't discuss much until the, until the chief, until our cop gets back.
That's nice to hear about, that new construction in the drove from Crawford County.
I was just at the, uh, not new houses up by the junior high there. And I've been getting built. Heck, they already, sound like that one might already have sold.
And there's talks of another one in Crawford County, um, just west of Dunlap. We're still Crawford County. I don't think that one's been approved yet, but, um.
Get to walk through them, though, the, or the one that's down in the bottom there. That was actually a pretty nice little home there. I mean, it sits on a slab, but, you know, it's really nice. It was a lot bigger than I thought. I actually gotta walk through one of them condo-like ones up there past Bellicera, too. Gosh darn, them are a lot bigger than they were. There's a lot of room in that. You know, that's one of our weak spots. Well, it's one of our national weak spots, I suppose, in that moment. It's nice to see some stuff happen.
And it's not just the one area. It's new homes for families, or retirement homes, or starter homes.
And you know with our, but our population, unlike, like Europe, even a lot of the East State, or a lot of the Asian countries, you know, their populations are shrinking so bad, and you know, you'd think they'd have an abundance of housing, but, I mean, we don't really have the, the shrink, but we don't have a large growth either, so.
Oh, good, good.
Good.
Colin, were you at all thinking about going to the O E A conference?
Uh, no, I mean, signing the budget, I mean.
It's complimentary.
Where is it at? No. If there's a zoom, I might zoom in, but I don't.
No, I don't know if there's, I don't think there's zoom on it.
Two of them are gone.
I checked, oh, take notes.
Read, yeah, Dave can read you. Okay, mister, the auditor's back, and Craig is gone. I think we could probably start.
Carla is.
She's gone.
Carla, yeah, I see her.
Ryan's on there, too. I just don't see him.
I, I don't see him. Maybe they're on the same one.
Can you guys hear us?
There's some.
There, yes.
Yeah, there he is up on the top there.
Yep. We're in the same room here, so she's listening in, and we can't see her, but she's listening at the same phone line, mine.
Hi Carla, hi Ryan.
Yeah, everybody's afraid to show their face on our little screen.
Well, I would tell you, Zoom sometimes for us doesn't work. For whatever reason, our, our security doesn't like Zoom for some reason, so sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So unfortunately, you get to see me today.
Well, we don't see you, so.
Oh, you can't see me?
No.
No.
I can see myself, which is weird. That's strange. Sorry about that.
Are you ready?
Tell yourself you look good.
Craig, so.
You guys can't see me.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we've got Craig to look at, so. We're gonna talk about funding options today, um, and Carla, you know, that, that spreadsheet that you put together, I did print that off. Is that one thing that you were gonna go over today?
Yes, yes, that's exactly right.
Perfect. I will hand those around then.
And hopefully, I know, Craig, I think you got it for us. We hope that the, the number, at least where you're funding at today is correct on there. I think, is, is it the six hundred and fourteen hundred where you fund today for single family? Singles and then families at fourteen hundred? Just wanna verify that. Okay, so, and I, uh, this is Ryan. I'll do some of the talking through this. I mean, we just wanted to kind of put this spreadsheet, Carla put it together, just to kind of go kind of where our suggested funding is. Again, being self-funded, you guys set your rates. We do suggest some funding based on kind of our claims projections, then plus the fixed costs that you pay, so the admin, the stop loss, all of those things. Um, so this kind of goes back a couple of years and shows where we, you know, where we had our suggested funding versus where you have been funding. Which I think up until this year, your funding had been probably more than adequate, because your claims experience had run much better than what we had projected, right? Which, you know, is a good thing, um, but also now that it goes the other direction, where your funding is at is, you, you know, what I would say is probably a little low, because I, I think Craig had mentioned your concern about, um, your health fund starting to, to go down a little bit, um, trying to figure out where to set those rates moving forward. Is that kind of the gist, kind of the gist of where you're trying to get to, or at least talk through today?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
That is correct.
And I don't wanna go through each of this. Does, does it kind of make sense what's on here? Hopefully it makes sense, like in that, that column where you're, you can see your, the very top is your six hundred and fourteen hundred. That is kind of your funding, and then down that row, that is our suggested rate each of those years. So for the two thousand nineteen contract, you were, you were pretty close that year. And then the next year, you know, we gave an increase, and it was a little higher, and then where last year's was is the, you know, the two thousand twenty-one was the seven forty-five and eighteen hundred, and then your current is here, and then if you go all the way to the very bottom one, that is the Walmart suggested rate, the eight fourteen and the two thousand thirty-five. Again, that, that's based on where we project claims, so if they come in much better, you're in a good spot, but if they come in higher, which is kind of what's happening in the current contract, you're starting to see your health fund, um, you know, go down a little bit what you have in reserves.
Is a lot of that due to inflation, or do we have more claims?
It's, it's been more claims. Yeah, when we were there, you know, and talked through the renewal, we were up there, it's kind of been those, I wouldn't call them the catastrophic claims. It was kind of that claims that are, you know, ten thousand up to, you know, just up to that stop loss level, so just the volume of those is up a little bit higher, but some of it, I, I suppose, over time, you could say it's kind of that inflationary cost, you know? Something that used to cost ten thousand dollars, maybe running. Um, a little bit higher, but some of it, I, I suppose over time, you could say it's kinda that inflationary cost, you know, something that used to cost ten thousand dollars maybe running twenty, twenty-five thousand, now it's, over time, those start to add up much quicker. Than what you've had before, so it's kinda been in that, that middle space is what's really increasing your claims cost, um, at least this year, right, you know, I don't know if we're seeing it start to, early in the year, you tend to see that, right, until it hits, people hit your stop loss level. Um, and then, then your claims tend to catch up, right, because Walmart starts paying once you hit that individual stop loss level. But you know, long term, I mean, and then we also added on there the max liability, which is that very bottom number that Carla put on there, that six, uh, nine sixty-two, I guess I put that in the, that's the catastrophic world, that's like, everything blows up and everything's bad, that's the worst case scenario, what the county would be responsible for under your health plan. So that's up to those numbers, so that's, that's kinda the worst case, we don't expect that to happen, but you know, we always put that on our rating list to say, here's the, you know, the end all, you know, it kinda gives you that, that comfort of you're not gonna pay more than that. So then it's worth. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Number here look better, I think it's the project, the objective.
You know, so again, you don't have to go with our funding numbers, we do those to try to help give you some guidance, you know, I, you know, it looks like historically you haven't necessarily followed those, so then it's, you know, it's kind of, you know, trying to fall where you feel comfortable with that funding going forward.
I mean, it's always been working, because if you look at nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, you know, the losses were actually under a hundred percent, so it was better, and this year we're, you know, closer to a hundred and fourteen, which I think is, is why we're seeing that dip.
Yeah.
Is any of this.
That's why you're seeing it.
Ryan was, now, is this anything that kinda been put in place from what we did, uh, a year ago when we went with that, uh, where we got caught up with our claims? Yeah.
Yeah, so it didn't necessarily change, the contract change didn't change it really, because you're still paying out the same claims, right, that are going, it just seems to be, it's just, honestly, the general utilization's just up, and that's what's causing your fund to go down a little bit, because, I mean, you still have the same, I get same risk, right? You're responsible up to the first, and I apologize, off the top of my head, is it forty thousand, your stop up, forty-five thousand dollars, stop loss level, so the county pays the first forty-five, and then we pick, you know, so the number's there, um, it, it's just, honestly, you've run really well for three years, which has probably masked, you know, the funding a little bit being lower, and now this year it really kicked up, just the general utilization, which now you're seeing that start to, you know, probably deplete your fund a little bit, you know, or run it down. Cause I, I guessing if you probably looked over each of the last three years, it probably increased, right, I don't have, I don't know what your fund, the amount's in there or anything, but I'm guessing the last three years, you've probably seen some growth in your fund, based on those contract periods, I, I don't know, somebody can confirm that.
That fund was, yeah, for, it was growing exponentially there for a while, so then we kinda gave our employees a, a relief and tight deal, and it kinda leveled off, and we were staying consistent, and then all of a sudden, this last six months, it's been going, kinda taking a slow nosedive, so.
Yeah, for sure. And that makes sense, so that's why, you know, we would definitely recommend you increase your funding to some point, you know, from that six hundred and fourteen hundred. You know, what that amount is probably depends on, on your, but you know, you don't wanna run that fund down too much, it sounds like you still have a decent amount in your fund, correct? I mean, you're, you still have a decent, it, it's not like it's really low.
It's not really low, but it's a comfortable amount, you know, it's.
Much lower, it would.
Yeah, we start getting lower than we are, then we start getting concerned, right.
Cause then you're only one or two catastrophic issues away from no fund.
Yet I don't wanna get into these whiplashes where we raise, you know, rates to employees, and then also we have this huge balance, and then we have to take it back down, you wanna kinda steadily.
Yep.
And I think it's the right approach, I mean, being proactive, it's better to, you know, look at everything now and review everything and analyze than have it get down too far and try to catch up, you know, cause that gets hard to do.
Craig, is that stop loss number, is that, uh, set in stone, or is that variable, can that change or not?
We, we set that, so that forty-five thousand, so every year we kinda review it, I think that one time we had maybe thirty, we bumped it to thirty-five, so we have changed that over the years. And I think, Ryan, we did look at this year to see if, if there was any savings, let's say we would bump that to fifty or fifty-five, um, it really wasn't, because you're putting a lot more risk on the county, you know, let's say we bump it another ten thousand dollars, uh, the savings wasn't there to justify.
Does Walmart do any analysis that says, this would be the premium stop loss number for the county, based on the amount of claims that we've had previously, is there a number that would be perfect for the county? And I would, would expect that to change every year, but do they do analysis like that to tell us what the best number is?
I think we did that in the renewal, right, Ryan, I mean, we looked at.
Yeah, so, so if you look, if you look on, on this sheet, can we always give like a suggested number, so, so going into the next year, our underwriting team looks at it, says, here's where we expect your claims to be, and that's where you go down to the, the bottom box there, where it says the estimated suggested rate, the kind of in there, on the two thousand, right next to the two thousand twenty-three, the eight fourteen and the two thousand thirty-five. So if underwriting was, I would say, it's always like, if they're perfect and they can project your claim down to the dollar, that's where we would say you should fund that, cause that covers your fixed costs, you know, your admin fee, your, your individual stop loss premium, um, all those fixed costs are rolled into that, so if, if they were perfect, that's what the funding would come out for next year. Now, I think what's helped in the past is we've been too high, so underwriting projected claims, and then your claims were better than expected, they were lower than what we projected, which helped, and now this year, you know, that's kinda the opposite, you're at that hundred and thirteen percent, so your claims are coming in higher than we expected. Um, and you buy, you buy protection for that, the aggregate stop loss is capped at a hundred and twenty-five percent, so you do have protection if things just go really bad, they only pay up to a certain level of claims, so you do have that protection in, built in there, but, you know, i- i- if you fund right at the suggested, you do have some, some, I guess, some, some risk, and if they're higher, you have to pay up to those claims. So I think to answer your question, if, if we were perfect, that eight fourteen and the two thousand thirty-five is where we would suggest funding at.
I think Craig's question was the forty-five thousand dollars, I mean, what's your optimal, that seemed to be what he was getting at, am I correct?
Yeah, so he, okay, yeah, so, sorry about that, um, yeah, it depend, it depends, we look at it every year, I think we've, you know, I, I think, you know, Craig, you hit it when you, you mentioned it, we looked at it, I think where you're at made sense, you know, you can save some premium, but you're gonna pay it in claims, so we looked at it the last couple of years, I think, and it just, um, rather than paying Walmart more or less fixed costs, you picked up, you know, risk in the claims, and it just didn't, it didn't, it didn't price out. You know, a lot of times I would tell you it does, you know, we look at it and say, hey, why don't you take on a little more risk, save some premium and take some claims, but the way your plan had been running, it, it didn't make sense to do that, it made sense to stay at forty-five thousand, risk, you know, protect your, your risk there and pay us the premium for it, it, it made sense. And that also helps cap you from having the big fluctuations, the lower that forty-five is, you tend not to have as big a fluctuations in your, in your claims from year to year, yeah, I say that while you're on a year that's up, but it tends to stabilize that a little bit, i- it's a little bit more.
Cause, yeah, and I mean, if we would try to lower it, obviously, then the premium's gonna be, you know, more, I think even this year, we looked at fifty, and I think even up to seventy-five, which we felt brought, um, way too much more responsibility to the county, you know, as far as premium wise, especially when we know for sure. Seven are probably gonna hit, you know, year after year, um, so it just didn't make sense this year.
I contacted Craig and kind of the information, all the non-organic stuff, to see if this was a full deal, because we had one or two claims that would just fall off the radar, you know, a one-time deal, but these kinda maybe some recurring things, so we're not gonna.
Most of them are gonna be there again this year, and so.
Yeah.
Wasn't just a.
So that forty-five thousand really, really stops you from having one person really skew your entire health plan, right, that's what that's doing, that's really helping you from those two or three claims, you know, pushing you out, out there, but this year it's just, you know, like I said, more the frequency than the volume, like the size of them, it was the frequency of those type, type of claims that are getting, kinda just getting up to forty-five thousand, you know, underneath that, which is then ultimately the, the county's responsibility to health plans.
Yeah, with, with inflation, all that, it gets frequent more often, obviously.
Yeah, you get that, and you know, and I think we talked about a little bit when you were there, you know, the, the aging population of your, of your workforce, right, you don't have a whole lot of turnover, so people as they age tend to have higher cost conditions as, as they age, I mean, that's what we see with, I think it's pretty, it's pretty common in the, in the public sector, right? Cities, counties, schools tend to have kinda that same issue, is the, the workforce is aging, which ends up, unfortunately, that, you know, we all know it, as you get older, you have more medical conditions, more medical costs, so that also plays into it a little bit as well.
We're not the machine. Everybody got a pretty good grasp?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys gathering that information, it's kinda what I feared you were gonna say, I was kinda hoping for a little better news, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully the claim to, to return, right, I mean, if you get the funding, doesn't mean it, it, it's not gonna turn and level off, you know, this year can, and I would say every health plan has peaks and valleys, there are ups and downs, you know, within a self-funded health plan, some years, and I would say from an underwriting background, that's my background personally, I was in underwriting, and I would say, you know, we're trying to do our best to project accurately to help you set your budgets from that standpoint, but some years were high, some years were low, just because you can't, you know, get it down to the exact, and then, you know, you're, while you, you know, you have a hundred and ten or so employees on the plan, that there can be a lot of fluctuation from year to year.
Two hundred.
Ryan, I got a question for you, Dave Mulbar here.
Sure.
Has Walmart's margin of profit stayed the same for what they receive from, like Crawford County, or has that gone down or up?
It is, it has really stayed the same, I mean, our, our profit, you know, margin is, is very low, um, so we are a mutual company, right, so we're owned by our members, you know, so typically our, our margins running, you know, a couple percent in total, very small, and, and that money is all being invested back in for us to keep our systems, you know, upgraded, making sure we have reserves to pay the claims, um, you know, so very small, we haven't increased our margins, what we're trying to make a- as far as profits, cause we don't have to pay stockholders or anything like that. Good question.
Mm-hmm.
This was our number this year, the very top.
Oh, the six hundred and fourteen.
And they wanna, is what have us raise it to.
To this.
To the.
Yeah, cause this is.
And that's, so the singles a thirty-five percent increase and the families a forty-five percent increase.
What, so you're aware of that?
That's a hell of an increase.
And that's.
Thirty-five percent and forty-five percent.
And for our employees and to bite that off with.
So, yeah.
Is a lot.
A lot. Do we have a, I don't wanna say policy, but do we always pay a certain percent, but what the premium would be, is that something, I mean, as a benefit?
We, who are we?
Or did we just, the county, for a county employee?
Oh, based on what their suggested rate is?
I didn't know if we always paid, be it eighty percent of what the projected, there was no policy ever set, that said, we just kinda, every year, what the number was.
Right.
We would.
Right.
Fund a certain dollar amount.
Yeah, based off what we currently pay in regards to what they're suggesting, which reflects, you know, it reflects claims, is where they come up with some of their numbers, basically, and some of those cost increases. Um, I, I know I used the comparison sheet, I believe Craig sent, that showed, um, it shows those claims, it shows the, um, and it showed what the difference is, showed what those increases are, and it averages about twenty percent increase. On the. Based off their, their, okay, based off the, uh, estimated suggested rates from last year to the estimated suggested rates from this year, I don't know if you all know, I think I shared it with everybody, it looks like this. So it comes out to twenty percent increase, I mean, I don't know that we wanted to twenty percent either, but.
Yep, that's, and that twenty percent, that twenty percent that was on there, with some of that, some of that that Walmart gave and suggested, it was that contract change, right, that, that's what we talked about the last time, about half of that was due to, was due to that change, but yeah, it is twenty percent higher than last year, yes, if you compare them, you know, that direction, just the numbers, but some of it is due to the, how that runout works.
And even, that even is regard to that max liability suggested rate.
Correct.
That, that's, they're both twenty percent.
You know, and do you, I mean, is this year just one of those years, I mean, you look back, um, the county's performed extremely well, you know, so historically, the last five, six years, you know, so, well, it's just this year happens to be that year that, you know, kinda got caught a little bit.
Is this something that we can leave at the current rates and monitor it quarterly or six months and make changes throughout the year?
I'm just afraid we're on a downhill spiral, and we don't change, we're trying to change the trajectory, at least get it to level off, we're, we're just gonna continue to, and I'm not suggesting we do this, that extravagant, no.
Right, no, I know.
Say we do something in the middle.
It'd be hard to swallow, you know, from six to eight, I, I, I feel it too.
And that, from the six to eight, you said that was in percentage, he says forty percent, I can't.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-five, that's thirty-five.
The six to the eight fourteen, that's thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
And even that, so if we base it off that, those two comparisons of suggested, um, rates, that's twenty percent, so twenty percent increase on our current six hundred dollars is seven hundred and twenty dollars. I still think that's a lot.
That's a lot.
That's a lot, it's, I mean, it's definitely a huge pill, if the, if our employees, if you're gonna keep the resolution at the same rate that it is seventeen percent, I'm not suggesting you do that. Seventeen percent of that hundred and twenty dollar increase has a, I, I mean, that's a big pill for our employees to swallow, and I'm not suggesting the county take on that whole thing either, I don't know if ten percent is more.
We could split it, what county take on in half, and then, I mean, that'd be like an eight and an eight, or eight and a nine, or, you know, the county paid more, I don't know.
Well, if you're, if you're a current county employee.
Yeah.
And you check the single box for coverage.
Yeah.
How much are you paying out of?
Hundred and two dollars.
You're paying a hundred and two, and it's costing six hundred, so the county's paying four ninety-eight, is that currently?
Yes.
Employees paying a hundred and two.
Right, cause current policy is that the employee portion of insurance is seventeen percent of whatever this sets as our rate.
So that's seventeen percent of the six hundred is up this year.
Right, it's a hundred and two.
So let me, let me ask some questions here, because I'm looking as we go here, last year is the year that we went to forty-five, and what was it the year before?
Was it forty or thirty-five? Think again.
Yeah, it was forty-five last year as well, it was two years ago, it changed it there from thirty-five to forty-five.
That's two years ago. Okay, but here's what I'm looking at, so if you look at our nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, okay, so these were you guys' suggestions and. What we actually. But each, each year, it was, it was all higher than what we actually paid last year, I mean, even clear back in twenty nineteen, you guys suggested six nineteen, and we only were six hundred last year. So that would tell me, that might be part of our, you know, we went down to six hundred from. Trying to figure out what the actual prices were those years, or what the actual numbers were, since the prices, the actual numbers that we charged.
Oh.
See, last year we charged, and, or this year that we're on, we're charging six hundred single and fourteen hundred for family, but we'd had a, a nice budget, so when we went to forty-five, we in a sense, probably even, not necessarily lower than, we just didn't raise it for darn sure, but I don't know, so I'm at, my question is, is if you go back to twenty-two, where we were six eighty, which is, you guys, is that, that's your number, or is that actually what we charged those years?
That's our number.
Okay, so we don't know for sure what our number was, cuz I sure don't remember off the top of my head.
Has it been this way for a while?
Percentage deal was just something started.
For the twenty one, twenty two year, that was when that seventeen percent started.
See, it seems to me that we actually gave, we were pretty good doing last year, because we.
Prior to last year.
Or prior to last year. That first year I was here, cuz there was a, I had all kinds of confusion.
Remember?
I can't remember.
And we, we at Walmart don't have that number, it'd be something wherever you have, probably looking back, we don't have, we don't track how you fund it. We just give our suggested rate.
Yep, got you. But you do have it for this.
From an out, from an outside, and I know, I know it's a tough decision, I, my recommendation, you need to, I I would say you need to increase it something, right? Because if you're already going, you know, your, 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 your fund is going down, I I don't, I don't know that holding right where you're at would be the right decision, and it'd be hindsight, right? If claims come down really good, it might have been the right decision. But if you're already going down, you know, then you're gonna be sitting here, you know, it could be in six months saying you really got a problem with your fund getting, getting depleted. So I don't know what that right number is, I, you know. But I do think you probably need to consider moving it some, somewhere upwards, just to start to try to, 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 in in some ways, stop the bleeding out of your, your health fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz we are bleeding.
I appreciate, I think we just need to really push the numbers around here and try to figure it out.
I think it is, and here's, here's part of the reason is, we have on the calendar right now for May eleventh to have employee enrollment and educational meetings. I think we're gonna start in the morning.
I think there's three meetings that day.
And we're explaining, we gotta do it today, don't we?
Right.
So, just to throw a number out.
On my agenda, I don't know about you.
The seventeen percent, see there?
Seventeen percent what?
Uh, well, tell me if my math is right, cuz I've got.
I will.
So right now, we're paying a hundred and two, correct?
For single?
For single, I'm just trying to, so if you raise it seventeen percent, does that take it to a hundred and fifteen, sixty? Did my math, did I do my math right?
Mine should be a hundred and nineteen thirty four.
Hundred and nineteen thirty four.
It'd be raised to seventeen.
Well, we'd have to, so you would be talking about raising the whole premium, so six hundred times seventeen percent.
Okay.
That brings it to a total of seven oh two. And then if you take that times seventeen percent, it's one nineteen. It'd be the employee share.
One nineteen as opposed to one oh two.
Yeah.
I know that sounds like a lot, but.
Seventeen dollars and thirty four cents.
And it also increases the county's portion. By seventeen percent, which is, which is.
And it takes the family about forty dollars and forty six cents a month that we have increased.
Is that what it is?
If my math is correct.
I've worked number twenty percent and I've did, I've done ten percent.
So I went in the middle of all that, and ten seems too low, twenty seems too high, so. I don't know.
Have we changed from that? Over the past few years, has that been relative?
It's always been an evolving situation back in oh two when I started, you know, it was, there was no, it was free. He didn't, he didn't pay nothing. And so it's just been slowly working, you know, trying to follow the trend.
When did we go to self insured though?
Oh, two thousand.
I don't know, five, six, or nine.
It's been a long time, it was before.
Nine, ten, somewhere in there, probably.
I bet it was before that.
It might have been, but.
I've been doing this since nine.
Cuz I mean, cuz looking at this history.
We were bleeding bad when we went self insured. To try to remedy the problem. And it's been working fairly decent.
I mean, even with our claims being less than what was expected for nineteen, twenty and twenty one, the premiums went up every year in spite of us, if you want to say, performing, underperforming what the underwriters thought they would do. So I mean, we're getting our cost raised whether we are.
Good or bad.
Right, whether we are having more claims or less claims, doesn't seem to change the fact that our premium goes up.
Craig, that's why I often are asked what their profit, margin of profit is.
So the one, the one thing I'll add to that is, while while you're performing better than we expected, you still have a trend factor you gotta apply here, right? Because the cost, you talk about the inflation trend, I mean, claims are still going up. So while we projected high, we still see, hey, our book of business is increasing at probably during these time periods, somewhere between eight to percent a year, eight to ten percent a year is about what we expect medical costs to go up every year. So, you know, that's the starting point when we do our projections, you're going up there, if you perform better, that's great. We may say, hey, your claims increase is only two this year because you perform better than trends. But yet, medical trend as a whole is going up ten percent. So you gotta, you know, it's always relative, right? Being self funded, you're reaping the benefits of when we over project, right? So that's, that's the why groups like to be self funded is, hey, you're betting on yourself that you're gonna beat our projections. And you had for three years and and performed better than what I'd say our book of business, what our expectations were. It doesn't mean that, you know, that everything else wasn't still going up. That, does that help a little bit? Yeah, so I mean, premiums do go up, I mean, if you're fully insured, guess what? We don't give decreases in the full insured, we don't, because we see those medical costs going up year over year. So, but at least being self funded, these years that you performed well, it's money into your side fund versus paying Walmart that actual premium. So that's the advantage of being self funded.
Well, like the self funded, it's just keeping that healthy account balance.
I think we have a fine line to walk where you, you have to keep that healthy balance in the fund without sticking it to our employees so much that it's over and above what the raise was.
It's always.
Balance of.
We have no control over insurance and medical expenses and, you know, the county, that's the problem. And, you know, suspended by.
I'm gonna say it's a fine line.
It is, I agree.
We do have control over their salary increases to a point. And we, to keep our budget in check and be very prudent with what we're expecting going forward, we kept it at three percent, but that's one thing, you don't wanna have a huge increase in these amounts that they have to contribute either.
But if we don't, whereas.
Where you increase it, but yet.
We, we can't keep it the same.
And we were already, obviously, six hundred wasn't working on our fund balance.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
And I use just the single number, but the six and fourteen weren't working on the fund balance.
So based on that seventeen percent increase and based on the numbers that we currently have in in single policies and family policies, it would be about two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars.
A year, so that would eat up.
And that's everybody contributing, employee and county, contributing, that's total increase seventeen percent.
So it still leaves us about two hundred and fifty short of what we spent this year. Right?
And you can only hope that claims make the difference that you're under.
You know.
But we've already projected that.
No, I know.
Particular.
I know. I know, but it's a projection.
Right.
It's a wag.
I was looking at some information the other day on the county, and I can't remember if I, I started helping like two thousand fourteen or two thousand twelve. But anyway, let's just say, ten years, I think, I think this is the first year that it was actually.
It is, so when we went, so and at some poor point, we went to F A I. Which is a subsidiary of Walmart. It was catastrophic, talk about catastrophic, we were down to three hundred thousand dollars in our fund. And then we went back to Walmart.
That's one, that's one car wreck with the ICU that we're going.
It was bad.
Well, yeah.
It was bad, so we got back to what, up to two?
We were up over two.
We were at two at one point, we've just, you know, we fluctuated little bits, which is expected, you should fluctuate.
Looked like it stayed around one point six for a while.
Right, it did, for really long.
To me, I was kind of the sweet spot there.
And now we dropped to one point one ish.
That's where we, we had it figured out.
So before we hit catastrophic again, I think we have to make gentle moves, which.
I would recommend.
Seventeen is not terrible.
I think seventeen is gentle, it's, you know, recommend.
Gentle as we can.
I think it's, I think it's fair.
Right, um, no, I know, and it's not gonna be easy on our employees, I'm gonna say that, it's not gonna be easy on any of our, whether you're elected or appointed or.
Right.
A deputy in the, or not, you know, hired, however fashion you were brought into the county for employment. It's not gonna be easy on anybody. So hopefully, this board will consider in the future that if things get better, potentially someday, sometime.
Yes.
I don't know when that is, my crystal ball's a little hazy these days, so.
And we've done that in the past, remember, we did two years where we kind of did some tax or insurance holiday type stuff.
I know, so hopefully this makes an impactful, it isn't, it is impactful into our fund balance. Hopefully, it makes a big difference and maybe next year you can consider.
I think that's also something when you're doing your training, I'm sorry, didn't.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
When you're doing your inner, when you're doing your training, you know, stay out of that emergency room unless it's a real emergency.
And that's the kind of things I think we're gonna educate our employees on.
Yes.
Are those options.
It is, so.
The telehealth stuff, the, those things that keep those copays down and keep those expenses down.
Health insurance is a benefit.
Yep.
But it's not an unlimited benefit.
Right.
It's at some point.
It comes at a cost.
Yeah.
For everybody.
And it's, it's cool.
Having zero fund bounds, which doesn't help anybody either.
Because then we're going the other way and we're gonna be like, Walmart, what can you give us for insurance? You know what I mean, you're gonna, and they're all gonna pay. Yeah.
Thing that probably never talked about yet, and maybe moving forward, if this don't really solve it, it's out of pocket expenses.
Yes, yeah, that that's another thing. But.
Oh, increasing deductibles and max out of pockets, yeah. And we did do that, and I don't know if we were with you when we did that, maybe that was when we started F A I.
Could have been.
Back in the day, I don't remember.
Changed.
Just, just another option, I mean, you know, if this, I mean, if we did the seventeen percent and it.
Didn't work.
Then lose, then gain, you know, we're just kind of floating around there.
Can you do high deductible plan and be self funded?
Yeah, we, I think we ran the options.
Yep. Yep, so you hit it, I was waiting, you guys were talking through that, that's the other thing to think about some point, is do you change those, those, like you said, those out of pocket requests, you know? And when you start making those changes, you're gonna affect the fewer people than you are the masses, right? Because there's not a, not as many people use that, right? You're gonna affect the utilizers versus the people that are, you know, using it, you know, maybe for preventive care, those types of things. So that, that's what, changing the plan design, which would also help, help with your fund too, cuz you'd pay less out in claims. The members pay a little bit more. That's the other thing to think about.
Well, I guess my goal would be, as you know, as education for these meetings next week is to get everybody on board to understand that it this is, it is a team. Um, if we can start using telehealth, you know, right, you know, you use that versus running to the emergency room or whatever, you know, that's gonna save the county, maybe it's a couple thousand dollars right there. So you do that a few times a year, and I mean, it really does make a difference at the end of the day. So I know, unfortunately, the, looks like there's gonna be an increase for this year. But hopefully, at the end of those meetings next week, you know, with with some education, hopefully next time, you know, this time next year, it's going the other way. You know, I I know that's, I don't know how, you know, much the reality that is. Policies to come in on these meetings or anything? And that ain't even the worst idea, cuz, you know, especially a lot of times the wives, because of the kids and stuff, they're a little bit more.
Right. Well, it's not all wives that are employees that have health insurance, so.
I use the emergency room more than my wife.
You do?
Yeah.
Get the duct tape out next time.
But 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 these packets, so we will have packets, you know, for the benefits, and not in great detail, but at least something simple that, you know, maybe they can go home and and share with their family and say, hey, maybe I learned this today. Um, there, here's the app, I already downloaded it, if somebody has a tool, hit the button. Analyzing my own, just on the secondary road, guys, beach.
Right, no, I know, I know what you're talking about, though, I understand.
So I think that's the one thing, want to touch base on.
Do you have a breakdown to how many employees either have individual plan?
Yeah, there was. I think it was thirty three or thirty five, thirty three single and seventy five family.
Thirty three and seventy five.
Yeah, that's how I came up with that, what, two fifty four or whatever it was, yeah.
Thanks for figuring that up quick.
Yeah, no problem. Calculator, it's incredible. Didn't have my phone, but.
Right, but I had to basic study them.
Well.
I think we're, I think part of it is that we've been somewhat generous over the years, you know, not actually keeping up with the suggested rate.
Yeah, right.
And that's what makes it painful.
It's, I know.
Oh, yeah.
So one thing that we do currently have in our dental plan is those single policies do not contribute.
Yeah.
So we could start contributing a percent.
Decide that they could.
Is that?
How much is it?
Part of the self insurance.
So it's different, that's actually with Delta.
That's for Delta and that's different, but.
Well.
But I I see what you're saying, it could maybe fill from one or whatever. How much is that, though? I mean, cuz I like what, even my drivers, I pay for all their dental.
But I have it here.
And I. What the single dental costs is?
And then when we got it, our insurance.
Do that, that's the whole amount of our fund.
Yeah, so we're Delta, we're Delta now, and we always ask by Walmart, and they couldn't.
Right, I guess I was talking to Walmart's, what they do for the county, Walmart, we ever bid that out?
We have occasionally.
Is that when you?
They got us to F A I once.
Thirty one sixty six as a single.
I don't know.
And family is sixty five, sixty two?
Well, the full range is ninety seven twenty eight.
Okay.
That'd be family, yeah, so I don't know.
So say that again, ninety five, twenty eight?
Uh, ninety seven, twenty eight.
I'm sorry.
And then thirty one sixty six.
Um, so, so what we do currently is that rate, the family rate, ninety seven, twenty eight, we subtract the dental rate, thirty one sixty six, and that's what the family pays.
Oh.
And the single rate currently pays zero.
So if you move the single to that they paid the thirty one sixty six, then the.
Or even a percentage of it, you know what I mean?
And and I will tell you, by looking at the numbers. You had them do the same percentage, just to keep it seventeen.
Oh, oh, sure.
See what I mean?
Yeah.
The numbers are a little different on the dental versus the medical. So, you know, on the dental, on the health, we looked at thirty three singles and seventy five families.
Yeah.
And the Delta and the dental, we're looking at forty eight singles and fifty nine families.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but you have more families on medical and more, I guess, employee only on dental.
I think it's free.
Yes, ma'am. So if we do seventeen percent of their suggested rate would be five thirty eight for a single.
Good catch.
And, okay, so how am I gonna figure this? My, my brain is melting.
One time I tried to figure it myself, I didn't add the seventeen, yeah. So. Study the equations first.
So we used to take family minus suggested single to come up with our rate for family. So.
So P T.
Does that stay the same?
Simple trigonometry.
It sounds like it's simple trigonometry. I haven't done that.
Well, if 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 the full family is ninety seven, twenty eight, and we're charging our employees sixty five, sixty two, correct? And if currently we're charging our single zero. And now we're proposing we charge them five dollars and thirty eight cents, is that right? Okay.
Is that the seventeen?
Uh huh, that's seventeen percent of thirty one sixty six.
In order for the sixty, so I think you'd be working off the sixty five, sixty two times seven.
Times seventeen percent. And, so, and you increase it again, I mean, that ninety seven, twenty So, and you increase it again, I mean, that ninety-seven twenty-eight was an increase. So the sixty-five sixty-two is already an increase.
Already the math doesn't look right.
I don't even know, can't think.
Well, maybe we'll, we can't, we can't table it, because we gotta do it today.
You're our banker.
Well, yeah, but this calculator.
So maybe that's all we do, we make them five thirty-eight, we keep the family at sixty-five sixty-two.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, it seems fair.
And then the county pays the remaining portion, well, yeah.
Five thirty-eight, you say how many were on the single, fifty-five?
Oh, forty-eight, forty-eight on single, fifty-nine on family.
The county's gonna actually put into.
Not really, we'll have more.
You know, it's not three thousand ninety-eight dollars.
It's not that much, I just feel like, well, look, they need to contribute.
Right now, the county's paying thirty-one dollars.
Sounds fair, and five thirty-eight is.
Every little bit helps.
So five point three eight for a single.
Not to be in our plan. In their meeting next week.
Well, at least it keeps it with the seventy percent of what you already talked about increasing.
So that's pretty good.
It's a, it's a baby step.
Okay.
And, you know, sometimes you have that.
Sixty-seven percent.
I'll have my smart person figured out better for next year, but for this year, this is.
Fair with the, the singles paid sixty-seven.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Ninety-seven twenty-eight times seventeen percent would be.
I mean, could you just add that five thirty-eight to the family? They were gonna pay sixty-five sixty-two, just add the five dollars and thirty-eight cents, add it to the family that.
They already took the increase of what the ninety-seven twenty-eight got them to.
I don't know.
I don't know what that increase was, you know? It was a six percent.
Well, went from ninety-one seventy-six to ninety-seven twenty-eight.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Say that again, Craig.
We could.
I mean, what you could do, right.
Five thirty-eight to both of them.
Is what I did is took the, the rate next year is thirty-one sixty-six, seventeen percent of that is five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Yes.
We were paying whatever the single cost is, we were taking that off of the family and. And so we're subsidizing both the same, no matter which plan they pick, is the way I understand it.
Yep.
So you take the next year's rate of ninety-seven twenty-eight, uh, take off the thirty-one sixty-six, the sing, single rate. That comes to the employee paying sixty-five sixty-two, what I'm saying is, is since we're making the single pay an additional five thirty-eight. We make the family pay an additional five thirty-eight, which would bring the amount of premium that they've had to pay to seventy-one for the family plan. Single plan would be five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I got it, believe it or not. I'm writing that down.
Written down.
Got it?
And add the seventeen percent on the single and family health insurance.
Got it. Okay, so there is, uh, a discussion, take action on here. So.
Could go over.
So, to set insurance. So that's what, that's what all this.
The motion would just set the rate for the employees, that's right, is all we do, and then the back, stuff in the back handle, kind of fixer everything else.
Yeah, we have no control over the backside of what you really charge us and what we really are getting, that's. It's a big number.
And so just so I understand, then currently, we, we take the total amount of premiums that it is per month. Employee, the county, just puts that in this fund that we have, that's a million dollars, and out of that. Fund, we also pay the insurance company every month, the premiums they do, and then we pay any claims out of that. Up to forty-five thousand dollars.
Yep, so every department budgets for, um, insurance, dental, health, dental, life.
Right.
The whole business, and that goes into that self-fund, and then our claims are paid out of it, our costs, our administrative fees.
Gotcha. So that seventeen percent increase, what's that, what are our single and family medical and?
Seven oh two, sixteen thirty-eight, and then dental will be seventy-one and five thirty-eight.
Okay.
What was the dental again?
Five thirty-eight.
Sixteen thirty-eight.
Seventy-one, but.
Family, dental.
I guess that would be my emotion, I will throw it on the table.
Five thirty-eight.
I'm like, yeah, we're letting her write.
Family, whatever.
I think we should redo the.
And stop loss remaining forty-five thousand.
Yes, yes, that does.
Forty-five, yeah.
That's what I heard Kyle say.
Seven oh two?
Yeah, total, these are total premiums.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they will end up paying instead of one oh two, one nine.
Who made that motion?
Kyle.
Kyle made the motion, we haven't had a second yet.
Justin, the numbers.
I'll second.
Craig Dozart makes the second.
Makes sense.
Do we have any further discussion?
Well, I appreciate everybody for putting Craig, giving that wind up.
And Ryan and.
And Ryan.
And Carla.
For putting these numbers together.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Something, let me know, uh, I, I'm gonna get the times and the locations and things for the meetings next week.
Yeah.
And start getting the packets and stuff created.
I think Amy gets back Thursday.
Okay.
Call a question.
All in favor states so by saying, is it a resolution?
This is the first one. The resolution.
Okay, call in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose nay. Chair both sides. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, Ryan Cars, thank you.
I'm going to get this to.
All right.
What do we got next? Cobra. She's got it, we gotta wait for the ball.
We do the five mile liquor license while she's, uh, you're putting that together, because it's already passed the time.
Yeah. Yeah, we should be able to do that, shouldn't we? Let's, let's skip into the, the discuss, take action for the liquor license on the five mile house.
I move we approve liquor license for the five mile house.
Second, Mr. Dozart makes the motion, Mr. Mulbauer seconds, any further discussion? All in favor states so by saying aye. Oppose nay, chair both sides, motion carries.
My pen doesn't flow that fast.
Did I get ahead of you that time, sorry?
I'm good, no, you're fine.
Heaven, there is nowhere but five mile houses in this land.
And, but you don't wanna get in the truck, you know, where they're in front of the, believe me, get in trouble there, keep them there, bear. Probably don't.
If you wanted to start discussing your resolution, I don't know that there's, aside from the. The changes you just made.
No, the only, only option, which I would suggest probably not to, you could set over rate of the full suggested retail price.
The insurance companies.
Right, why would we not?
We actually add two percent.
Two percent for managed, okay.
My goodies here, we all.
How long can they stay on Cobra?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, thank you, I didn't know that.
Or if they retire from the county prior to the age of, what, sixty-five? We can Cobra them up until then.
Sixty-five.
Yeah. That is the other.
How many of them do we have?
Can't tell you that, I don't know that. I don't know if I can find that, I've been, I can't hear that.
I don't think there's very many Cobras period, is there?
Six.
Is there six?
Did I hear that? I wrote six down. Somebody said six about something, what's the answer, what's the question to the answer six?
That's pretty broad.
You're right.
We have been setting the Cobra rate at the full.
At the full suggested.
Yeah.
Which is well.
And then two percent above.
I think I remember reading that, two percent somewhere.
Yeah. And Jerry heard.
We could do whatever.
Terry sent that out. So they would get, set Cobra at the eight fourteen and two thousand thirty-five. Boy, that's a hell of a jump from what it was. Of course, that's not a suggested, their suggested was seven forty-five, so we would have set that at seven forty-five, no, twenty-two.
I mean, you still can't.
Twenty-two was actually lower.
Go on the exchange.
Because we went down to eighty-three.
Health insurance policy for less than that eight hundred.
You don't think so?
Without subsidies, I'm just saying.
Oh.
Without subsidies, because I went on, um, I had a client whose wife. Worked, they got the insurance through her work, and she passed away. And so he, we, he came in and we looked on the healthcare.gov website, and it was cheaper for him. To buy the Cobra at the cost of the employer, um, for eighteen months. Until now his eighteen months are up, so he's gonna have to go online. Without subsidy, because I mean, he's one of those wealthy farmers, so.
We found one.
We found one, the one.
Kyle?
Okay, so the, the resolution that was approved back in twenty twenty-one. It says Cobra rates are set to be the total premium plus a two percent administrative.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
You sent that in an email to us, didn't you?
Yes, so single would be at the seventeen percent increase, it would be seventeen, seven, sorry. Seven sixteen point oh four would be a Cobra rate. And then, of her, for single, sixteen thirty-eight times, what, two percent? Um, sixteen seventy and seventy-six cents would be.
I have a question. So, do, does that Cobra then, are they still part of our pool?
So they're part of, the claims we pay, they're part of. And it's law.
Right.
I, yeah, I get that, but I'm just thinking.
The two percent is allowed by law.
Um, why, why are we not using that eight fourteen oh six?
Yeah, why are we giving them?
Two thousand thirty-five fifteen numbers for single or family. That they had based on the twenty twenty-three. I know that they said.
In there?
Yeah.
Craig, do you know Cobra law, Cobra, do you know Cobra law?
Yeah.
So, they're asking why we don't use the suggested rate from Wellmark for Cobra. We can't, can we?
I think we've been down this road like three, four years ago.
I thought, so what do you use for Cobra, I guess?
We use the rate that they set. Um, plus a two percent administrative cost is what we use for our Cobra rates.
Never asked this question before.
Well, I just think, I've been thinking back, we've been down this road before, we set that. Three, four years ago, we set it at that rate, and then we had to go.
Six hundred and fourteen hundred now.
And plus two percent. Yeah, so like currently, that six hundred rate is six twelve for Cobra.
Yeah.
Fourteen twenty-eight. And this is what it would be at the seventeen percent increase. Be that and that, and so they're asking why we can't use your suggested rates.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I'm sorry.
The eight fourteen and the two thousand thirty-five.
Why they're getting an employee discount, so to speak, and the taxpayers of Crawford County are still.
I didn't know that part was coming.
Oh, I know, no, I'm sorry, I was hoping.
We're talking eighteen months or something.
No, 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 I knew that.
I couldn't find out, but you probably, you didn't even know it right this minute, I'd call, um, call.
I mean, I just don't know why.
Please, please call.
We can do some of this other stuff.
Do we, do we have to set the Cobra rate, the actual number rate?
Yes.
We can just, okay, all right.
Yeah. It can fluctuate throughout the year, we have to set it, it's good for that, good for a year, and then you can reevaluate it every year.
It was gonna be whatever we get billed by the insurance company.
Can't be that.
Then we don't have to change it over here, that's just what it is.
And seventy-one dollars.
It's fair to the taxpayers of Crawford County.
And if ours is gonna be eight fourteen point oh six, or maximum, it could be two thousand thirty-five fifteen, to me, that's the number we're gonna be using.
And if you look at the reason for Cobra, you know, either you quit your job and don't have an insurance. But normally if you quit, it's because you found something better, wouldn't you think? Or you're retiring at age sixty-two and you need something until you turn sixty-five.
It seemed like we've been down this road before, because I remember Amy coming in here. I think it was all started right around, maybe the time. Former supervisor, Almer got off, and we set that.
Right.
And he was, he was using the Cobra for a short period of time, and at that point in time, and he questioned it. So Amy did some checking and found out that we were in the wrong by charging that rate.
Right.
Or, or.
There was some.
We were charging a hot, rate higher than what we were charging our employees.
Yeah.
There was something that I, I don't recall.
We wanna stay within the law.
We guys, we have to stay within the law.
So I feel like the only thing we're, that's up for discussion is that Cobra rate, if we don't get this resolution done today. I don't think it's the end of the universe, we've set rates, we can, information we hand out to our employees at those meetings, you know what I mean?
I think this is key that we figure this part out.
No, I know, but I feel like if it needs to happen next Tuesday, it could happen next Tuesday.
I think we're open.
The resolution, but just in case, whatever Craig can or cannot find.
If that will table it and. Tuesday to make sure.
And we're just waiting to hear.
Yep, we're just waiting on that.
Chance we get that done.
Yeah, you wanna. Set time and date.
Citizen's input.
Set time and.
Well, we got the public hearing. Set time, date, for public location, location will be here.
We can have it anywhere.
Okay, so based on when we can publish and how long we need to publish, um. Hold on, latest publication date. Seventeenth or twenty-third, or sixteenth or twenty-third?
Yeah, sixteen or twenty-three.
I think it would be, why didn't I think?
Jeez.
Yeah, it's May twenty-third, so that allows us. So we can't, we can get our notice to the papers this Friday, all three of them. It'll be in the paper next week, which would be the eleventh and the twel, or tenth and eleven. And if our meeting is the twenty-third, that falls within the ten and twenty rules of publications. So May twenty-third is the date on proposal.
Twenty-three May, ten AM? Ten AM.
Move, we set the public hearing for budget amendment at ten AM, uh, May twenty-third. At the supervisor office, Crawford County.
Been moved, Mr. Dozart seconded by Mr. Mulbauer, so the, to have the public hearing right here, ten AM. To have the public hearing right here, ten AM on the twenty-third, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, chair votes aye, motion carries. Craig's back. Yeah.
They need to be the same, right?
Okay. Very good, confirmation.
Thank you, Karen, sir. Yeah, I appreciate that.
If he didn't run out.
Thanks, Greg.
And two percent is the most we can charge for administrative, do you know that?
Yes.
That's right? Okay, so we probably shouldn't round up. We should go with two percent.
I see, you're right. Two point oh three or something.
Profit margin is going up over here.
Okay, I missed the word.
Well, now we know.
Well, here we are on hold again, our cop left.
No, you're gonna jump right in one to the other.
Oh, it's not to one, but you know, me, left has to come before.
Since we're still alive.
Where are you going for lunch?
Since we're still alive.
Yeah, exactly. Even if we weren't, great, my guilty conscience just cleared me alive.
Chuck, you have a good weekend?
My mom did a good job in stealing guilt.
Say you didn't roll away?
The tool of every mother.
I'd like, we had confirmation on Sunday, and you, did you catch that when Bishop said? Thought that was pretty good.
Congratulations, you're, you're another grandbaby. Congratulations.
Two boys, two girls?
Reed. It's easy to remember their names, Andy and Reed.
You gonna have Brian have another one?
Yeah.
You can't tell he's a.
Chief Ben.
Chief Sam. At all. That's pretty cool. Next one's gonna be named Kansas.
You know, you could, like, I could have did that, but I don't have.
Okay, so we've got Cobra rates at seven sixteen oh four for single. And sixteen seventy and seventy-six cents per family.
Pretty good deal.
Seven sixteen oh four and sixteen seventy and seventy-six?
Yes.
Okay, I get it written down.
So you need a motion for?
I need a motion for that resolution.
I'll make a motion to set the insurance for Cobra rates for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, we need all the rates set, right, and Cobra?
Yeah, it'll be health, dental, um, Cobra, alright, it's all of it, yeah, and that's what's in the resolution.
I just say.
Seven oh two and sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we got what you mean.
And, okay, so the motion was made by Ms. Hayden and seconded by Mr. Mulbauer. To set the insurance rates and it's, let, let me try to see if I got them right, seven oh two for single on insurance, sixteen thirty-eight for family. Uh, inch, the delta would be five thirty-eight single, seventy-one for family. And Cobra rates would be seven sixteen oh four and sixteen seventy seventy-six. For family, did I get that correct, Madam?
I was not listening to you, so I don't know. I'm trying to write.
The right numbers.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, sounds good. That sounds good. And this is a resolution.
Yes, it is.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Dave, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbauer? Chair votes aye.
No. It needed to be done, it turned, I think it turned out well though.
Well, as well as we could get it.
Yeah.
I think we were struggling with it. Time would indicate.
You'll sign twice.
Okay, I will. Front and back.
And so in regard to the, the budget, um, hearing that you said, Chuck does have some information.
Okay.
On what's gonna be on that amendment, so that would be.
That'd be great.
Good for you to.
Know that.
I think I have them. I have it, if I can find it again, I'll find it.
I got a lot of, there was a lot of trees wasted in today's meeting.
Yeah.
Trees are never wasted.
Right and back.
Well, grab a filing cabinet.
I'd like to.
Go ahead, I don't.
What are you doing?
Filing cabinet.
And I think that there could probably be some. Going into, built a can in a corner.
I found it, Chuck.
I'd rather do that some Tuesday.
That's a good idea.
Do you need one, Chuck?
Oh, is this is what Chuck's gonna discuss with us?
Yeah. We're just talking out, um.
Did you know that, Chuck? Are you gonna be here next week?
God willing. He's here right now for this, so.
I gotta be on a big vacation to Hawaii.
If you, if you follow the general basic one first, let's do that. Go down to our supervisor and. Ask for a six thousand dollar increase there.
Yeah.
Kind of the reason for it.
It's mostly publication costs, but school is going over.
Okay. Zoning.
Yeah. Yeah, Dwayne came and mentioned that one to me.
Historical.
So they sold those calendars and they have those extra funds, so that is supported by revenue, you can see that off, way off to the right.
That's good, okay.
Oh, I see.
Revenue amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, human services, yeah.
Yeah, you sheltering. We did amendment, they were in our first budget amendment. Because we started getting all those extra ones that DHS was assigning for sheltering. And they didn't want it coming out of his budget.
I remember.
Whatever.
Got it. Yes, forever, yes, it didn't get in the original budget.
Well, we spent money on tree removal and that zapped that line item, so we needed a little bit more in eight, in order to. Do that reimbursement we do for pheasants forever for the land management.
Land management.
No reimbursement? And revenue, no, don't we get money back somewhere, no?
No.
From whom, from? No, no?
We get money from this conservation reserve plan payment.
Right.
And we give it for this.
And that's already budgeted.
We spent a lot of that for cleaning them trees up, so there's no new revenue.
I always like to see something over there.
Mind you being a little greedy there.
Wish there's a way to sue.
Last one is IT.
So we're starting that timekeeping process, so.
That's the last one on the general basic, I should say.
Yeah, that's for general basis.
Make sure you pull the choke on that.
I know, I know, someone needs to put a collar on him anyway, but.
Attorney Department, I guess.
Since he's not my employee.
All voting machines that we agree.
Yeah. Yeah, that's supplemental, that's where election stuff is paid out of the supplemental.
And that's all the new screen ones.
Flip it over.
Flip the page over.
Oh, more?
Real basic.
That's what Paul gave us earlier.
Yeah, yeah, part of it.
We commissioners.
Yeah. Yeah, did, his mileage rate went way up, so we gotta fund that.
And the attorney, something new again.
And Bluetooth for this.
That's that collections fund that he has, that he gets through when the clerk of court does their stuff.
Training for Martha and Bluetooth.
All supported by revenue.
Yeah, that one is supported by revenue.
There you go, Jane, there's your column, last one is the secondary row. And that's, uh.
That's from that sheet that Paul gave you this morning.
Yep. But there is a little bit of money on there.
Little bit.
Better than none.
So, yeah, there's quite a little bit in there, it's not huge dollar wise, just a lot of little pieces. Yeah, right, 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 cause there's a cost to us doing an amendment, we have publication costs.
Oh, sure.
All that good stuff, so, and there's a time limit, they want our amendments in by the end of May.
Hard to believe, we're starting to push the end of the fiscal year already.
We are almost there.
Time flies when you're, uh, fun.
Like you say, every Tuesday comes around.
Okay.
The fiscal year comes around, we gotta do cash counting again.
I don't wanna have it, I try, I try to look through all the, I look through all that stuff to try to make sure.
Nobody's gonna come next week at, or the week after.
They can come, but.
Okay.
Ain't gonna happen, we don't have time, I mean, I'm, right, I mean, you know, I'm hearings already on the twenty-third of May. And we're talking about it, may second, yeah, we don't have time to do it anymore. Yeah, and I kind, I went through a lot of those budgets to see that, to see that they were good and, and, yeah.
So we still have a desk and paper to send these things to?
Yes, so far.
Just no employees.
So part maybe the.
What happens if that? Just putting it on our website and hearing the courthouse count?
With those other newspapers.
The, you'd have to get your, uh, Senator and Representative to, uh, update reg- legislation.
We would just do with those two remaining papers in the.
Right, currently, that's.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah.
Well, we can do, we could always, if we wanted the third, we still got the Maplewood Press that covers most of the western part of.
Charter opens last week.
Yeah, the direct mailer.
Yeah.
He had a pretty good article in there this last week, okay.
So we're good.
So, yeah.
I think we're covered, aren't we?
Yeah.
We're almost to the citizens, no, Dan, citizens' input, everybody took off.
Ain't that amazing, he retires or whatever from the newspaper, he just loses all interest.
No interest in us at all anymore. He actually said he might stop back, he's been dealing with the dog issue.
Kempson call you every day yet, or?
Nobody calls, nobody calls.
Is Kempson even at the?
No, he's, he's. He's up in Minnesota, Paramount, Minnesota, I think.
Well.
So we have no, no, no publications other than.
No news.
My Facebook, which, you know.
No news is good news, huh?
So anyway, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn if you guys. Oh, did we have anything on the Zoom land, thank you for reminding me.
Zoom land, I like it.
I don't see any hands raised on that.
No hands raised.
On the tablet.
Nobody's hollering at us, so I would entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Dozart makes the motion, Mr. Mulbauer seconds, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, chair votes aye. Right on the button.
You and I set a time to go talk to.
Be safe out there, guys.
So I wish that media was up, dude.
Have fun, enjoy your afternoon.
Thanks for not including me, I really appreciate that.
In my eyes.
Have a great week.
Yeah.
If you don't like it, we'll take our ball and go home.
That's right. I think you're right.
Can you?
I mean, to be honest, I mean.
Do you know how to turn that thing on and off?
Oh, yeah.
I think we're pretty generous.
Thanks for your supervision.
The only reason.
Common right now to talk about this.